My trust. Probably, probably wish I took it out of the way for you today night because I know why I missed my. For the purpose, yeah, I share a here. And so. The now she is. One. People's here. On there from the line. Share your. Now, it's time to assist you here. I'm going to wait for social change. I know which one. Turn into social. So he did change. So.
Seven.
But always discuss. So. So the gentleman before us when they want to. So we have several. Actually, I was today. I'm like, sorry. I'm glad. I think relax. And.
I want to relax. Babe Pollock, who's. Both of them, I'm sure, had a late night. I know today many of us feel like college students. We were up way too late last night checking our phones, texting or checking materials. And we have a class earlier than we wanted to this morning. And we're perhaps a little distracted. But the election's over and I think we can return to normal where we aren't obsessing with it and have a peaceful transfer of power. Today, our agenda includes a brief discussion of AI, which is really governance and how we manage this huge enterprise and use tools to support it. Facilities, which includes a billion dollar deferred maintenance, elephant in the room and the drivers behind it. And the generous investment that in assets that the taxpayers of the state have made in the university. Law enforcement is another item. How we can fill a crucial pipeline for a workforce that ensures our safety. And legislative efforts regarding transparency, accountability and outcomes, something that's near and dear to my heart. And what are we promising those students that come here and the taxpayers, both in terms of cost and outcomes? To start with AI, we can launch that screen. It's going to be a very brief item on AI because the idea behind the presentation was to. Prepare us and encourage. Exploration of AI. And we've already kind of, the staff has already jumped ahead to that. So the staff is going to dig into this further. There's been widespread acceptance of the concept. Some of y'all may have noticed in onboard. There's a new AI function that allows you to click while you're in a page and get information presented to you about that. It's fairly limited and only works for the document you're reviewing. It only occurs in a chat window. So its usefulness is a little limited. I also demoed the meetings minutes projects, which is another feature of onboard, which would allow for AI meeting minutes to occur and tracking better our minutes and our items that come up during the meeting. It requires tying back into a speaker system. So again, they're looking into that further as well. That the backbone of onboard is Azure. And then you have other systems that may be a better fit, but they're looking into all of that. We have, I think, with us today, Professor Mark McNeely, who is really the expert in AI. But this was kind of the idea that AI could be used for pre-meeting preparation to gather materials and even contrast that with historic minutes so that you have historic context on a particular issue. And how did prior boards rule on that? What did we discuss previously? Connect that in. The in-meeting facilitation, which is really just a transcript or minutes, but then tied into the mic so that each person's comments could be tracked and recorded for follow-up. And then a post-meeting follow-up with chatbot to answer questions we had asked during the meeting as answers are placed in there. So there's different elements that we've got to look into regarding the legal aspects of it. And then we also have the mechanics of it and the tech behind it as well. And this is really piggybacking off of the chancellor's AI committee, which has done an extensive exploration of the topic. But if we're going to lead on AI, we need to adopt it, I think, from the top down as well. Are there any questions about this topic for or discussion regarding AI? I know today's going to be a low participation day. Okay, so we can switch to the next presentation. Now we're jumping into one of my favorite topics, higher ed reform, transparency, accountability and outcomes. This is inspired by legislation that Congresswoman Virginia Fox has championed to address the massive student debt crisis. And I think we'd all understand that that is a critical issue. For those who know Congresswoman Fox, she's really an iron lady who doesn't mince words and demands really transparency, accountability and measurable outcomes from anyone in her path. She's a champion of the US workforce and a true believer in the transformative power of education. I continue to be inspired by her no-nonsense approach. This quote, I think, embodies some of what she stands for. "We have a responsibility to protect the interest of taxpayers and ensure that students are receiving a high-quality education that enables them to repay their loans and be career-ready. And while it seems obvious, it isn't always obvious." The College Cost Reduction Act that Congresswoman Fox has proposed really has three elements to it. Transparency, affordability and outcome-driven accountability. There was nice music effect there, Ralph. We have to get you to add those to the slides so that as we switch, we can get try to ring, you know, get another ringtone ready for the next one or switch in. There's AI in there. So when we're talking about transparency in the College Cost Reduction Act, what, what they're asking is what does it truly cost? So what's the total cost of attendance? And are we making that clear before enrollment? Are we offering standardized financial aid packages that are clear, that people know what they're getting into? And, and what's the upfront cost? Can we provide a fixed number that someone will know exactly what their total commitment is, what they're signing on for and what that total loan is going to be? Kind of a truth in lending in higher ed. And the College Cost Reduction Act proposes variable pricing based on programs based on their outcomes. So it encourages state longitudinal systems. And what that's really getting into is the idea of the state systems talking to each other. Can we get the, can we get them working together? And can we get that even from K through 12 as well as state to state? Collaborating with them through the Census Bureau's post-secondary student employment outcomes, which we're not participating in as a state right now, but moving towards that. And then transparency on outcomes. These are two slides from nctower.com. There's also College Scorecard as well. But you can look at the difference in degree outcome for two degrees, two of our most popular degrees, psychology and business, with a pretty good delta between earnings. So are we making that clear to people when they're signing up for a degree at Carolina and attending the university? Or are we telling them the average? And then if they don't hit that average, are they going to be able to pay back their student loans? Or is the value proposition going to be there? So one of the program's recommendations is adjusting pricing by program. So the idea of having a higher price perhaps for business in that case versus psychology, looking at ways to reduce the time to degree. And for instance, things, talk about another section with the Student Ranger Program, the idea of transferring credit over from community colleges, which we have the articulation agreement in place for both. But can we do more competency-based education as well? And then what can we do in terms of providing incentives, either financial aid or loan forgiveness, when we're trying to fill certain needs? So for instance, nursing needs out there. You may not have the same ROI calculation where the person's earning the income, but it's a state-level need. So can we incentivize that as well? And some of this is state-level programs that would need to be adopted by the legislature. But some is internal, but we can do at the institution level. And then what's our, what's the student's ability to pay rather than willingness to pay? And can we marry up merit with merit rather than necessarily recruiting? And then emphasizing this ROI for both students and taxpayers. And can we develop something like an earnings price ratio where you're looking at what the additional earnings are versus the cost? We've done some work in these, in this area already. And then redeploying money from programs that are low ROI into either high state workforce needs or higher ROI majors. And then ensuring that we've got skin in the game. You know, are we working with them on loan repayment assistance? The program encourages that. Are we using more scholarships? And are we pricing to make it a fair return on the investment? And can we provide stackable credentials to get people who don't or may have to stop out? Have they got something along the way that they can use? Instead of some college credit, is there a stackable credential? And what do we do post-graduation to give them credentials? So how do we add value to their earnings potential at every step along the way? When they start school, after they complete it, and then later in life as well? So to recap, it's a commitment to guaranteed price on the front end. And the idea would be you set one price and that's locked in for someone throughout their college commitment. So if the program fees changed or other fees changed, those would be baked in on the front end. We've got some of that right now with our four-year tuition guarantee. This would expand to fees and program fees. Sharing data with others. And that's that participating in those different state-level programs and K through 12 programs. Proactively disclosing true outcomes. You know, time, I don't need to read these to you necessarily, but reducing the time to degree and impacting a student's lifetime earnings. This was a quote from Congresswoman Fox as well, who we're awarding the Davey Award to tonight, about promises. And I think when we're bringing in a student and we're asking them to come to the university and we're telling them they can expect a certain outcome, we're inherently promising them that outcome. And if we don't make good on that, we either need to make sure we're providing them the correct information so that we make good on that promise, or we need to make it up to them. And that's what the program envisions. The modeling for the program right now shows Carolina is in a good place. It would provide an additional $1.8 million of funding. Some of the other schools in North Carolina, I think the highest is maybe eight million in additional funding. The worst is like an eight million dollar hit to funding. So I would imagine with last night's election results, this had passed the House previously. It did not make it to the Senate. That world has changed now. So I would expect this to move to law. But whether or not it does, it's the right thing to do and I think we should pursue it. Any discussion or thoughts on that? Yes.
Yeah, could you go back to the slide where it kind of lays out all of the takeaways? Yeah, I really like point number seven, focusing on ROI for students and taxpayers. I think as students, I've seen this constant trend of people wanting to get out of the state of North Carolina and go pursue jobs in DC or New York. But I'm wondering if there's any opportunity within this plan to kind of make a pipeline? Once you graduate from a UNC system school, can you go work in North Carolina or go work in government? Or do something that's basically serving the state?
You know, I think that's, that's a great idea. That, that is envisioned by the act. The idea of scholarships or state-based aid, that you get loan forgiveness if you do certain things. And we've got that right now with our teachers program, for instance. And I'm sure there are other programs out there that have that as well. But I think that makes a lot of sense. And some of this is we can do and some of this we'll need to propose at a state level and also propose at the federal level. But I think that's a great point. Other discussion or thoughts? I know it's a late night yet, Perrin.
No. Um. Can you go into any greater detail on point three? About the proactively disclosing true outcomes?
So the idea behind that is NC Tower shows, you can click, if you go to nctower.com, you can click on UNC System Chapel Hill, pick a degree or credential. And if there's enough people that have earned that, because of privacy standards, it will give you the information on actual earnings and graduations. Or it'll give you the number of graduates. It'll give you the, those people have enrolled in college as well for a graduate degree perhaps. It will tell you the employment outcomes and how many are employed. Now that's at the state level because right now the data does not marry up with other states' tracking. And that's part of the discussion. We need this to talk to more places in order to get better data. And it will show you actual wages and these are from people's tax filings as well. So it's not survey data. It's what they're actually reporting in income. So one of the ways you would make that more transparent is you would publicize NC Tower and College Scorecard. You might take some of that data and pull it out for a program. So when someone signs up for that and they're incurring debt, kind of like a truth in lending. You know, when you sign up to get a loan, you're, you've got a lot of truth in lending disclosures. That's what this would be as well. And the idea is to do that before they enroll in that program so that they're not in there and committed. And then they learn, I'm not gonna make. And the program really focuses on if you can't make more than 150% of the poverty level, that's a, that's a failure is the idea. So every program should at least generate that, but it should generate a return on the investment. So if you spend money, let's say a higher-cost program in graduate school, there's a greater expectation that you have enough delta in your earnings increase that it at least pays that back. That you're, you're better off than you would be. But some programs are not. Some programs are net losers. There's less of those at Carolina than other schools, but still worth reviewing. Does that answer your question?
It does. Does that also include? So that would, that would help a student potentially decide upon a program or degree offering that they want to pursue. Does that take it a step further and show completion rates for a given degree program?
It does. So it shows the graduates in there. And there's other, it's, this is from NC Tower. There's other data on the UNC Dashboard and College Scorecard that provide comprehensive. So the idea would be to pull from the different sources. And then in the same way, one of the first changes we made at Board of Governors when I was there was we did tuition breakdown. So people could see how their money is being spent. This is just more transparency. So we're just, all we're doing is being honest with everybody and letting them know what the real outcomes are and what the real costs are. Yeah, I think, I'm not sure who had their hand up first. Treasure, Brian?
So playing the type, as a numbers guy, I'm fascinated by this. But I do recall as I was applying here in the early 90s, by far the most lucrative major at UNC at the time was geography. And the reason for that was one particular basketball player in the Chicago Bulls. The question is, can we have enough transparency to disaggregate the data in a way that's meaningful rather than being confused by outliers?
Yeah, so actually the, the NC Tower data, for instance, does not cover entrepreneurs or out-of-state folks. So there's some weaknesses in that. And there's some advantages to College Scorecard. But the idea would be to try and find the best data and the most accurate data. It's hard to, you know, that's, that's where you can go in the mean as well, so.
I was just gonna say, I think this is all great, but it seems like this is already information that's out there. So would it be as simple as just putting a link on what we call it Caroline, but wherever they, wherever students register for classes? Or, you know, Lee, I think you just sort of made me to look at student career and services, what we started, those type of websites that we're rolling out?
Yeah.
More than create.
I think the data is out there, but the idea is to make it so someone doesn't have to click in five different spots to get to the data. And again, more like other loan programs where you're signing up, where you're being provided that information when you sign. So when you sign up, knowing whether or not you're going to be able to pay back your loan. And then again, it focuses on encouraging the school to be, to fix that, either to reduce the cost. So it, you know, it envisions engineering being more expensive than social work for program cost. So you price accordingly. So you, you offer a cheaper degree for those that aren't going to be earn as much, especially if it's in an area where it's a state need, like a social worker or nursing type program.
Do you go back to the recap page, please?
Which one?
The recap.
Yeah.
Page, I think it was number six, five. Explain to me what the goal of that bullet point is. I don't know, obviously a lot of ramifications.
The goal of all those, these are all in the vision.
Bullet point five.
Oh, sorry, bullet point five. So the idea is you could, you could, you're reducing the cost of college. If, for instance, like we did the articulation agreement with the community colleges, and we have a really solid pipeline at Carolina of people that come from community college and then come into UNC. Maybe they live at home and they they're able to save money there. That's one way. Another time, another way is we could look at year-round offerings. We've, BOG has already done work in the summer school space to allow, to encourage more of that. And we've got state funding for that now. That's designed for that. We did a, when I was there, we did a limit on credit hours that would be required. That's another way to do it. Earned experience is another way to do that, to give earned experience and work on better transfer credits. And so those are all different ways to reduce the time or the effort and therefore the cost. Because as, you as an attorney know, time is money.
Yeah, well, just, you know, college is a little different from billable hours. So, I mean, I'm trying to figure out if there's a problem there. I mean, I would imagine most students here are so smart that they've taken all these courses in high school that give them probably on average, a semester's worth of credit. I just, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, maybe a vast majority of, of students choose not to graduate in three years and take 12 credit hours instead of 15. I, I'm just trying to think, you know, to what extent are there students there that wish they could get through in three years and aren't? I, I just.
I think sometimes that's people that come in with credit from another institution. And it's also the, you know, you, you've got some, and we made changes for this, for if you've got AP credit, you'd have a certain score in order for that to count as well. So I think some of that is either counting AP credit or counting other institutions or having the credits link over from community college. And then some of that may also be whether or not they can get a class that they need, that they need for their degree to graduate, or if it's offered then, or if they have to wait another semester to get it. But.
So would this mean that students would have to declare their major early on? Because I know a lot of students, you know, they kind of do a 180 and flip around to what, what degree that they want to get. So what would that mean for students that change their degree halfway through or?
Yeah, I didn't see any mention of that. I think the idea is if you sign up for something, having that clear cost for it, but if you changed, you know, that promise would, would maybe go away or have to be something different at that time. But I didn't read anything that, that indicated that it would limit someone's ability to transfer or change.
I'm good. Thank you. I think in the interest of time, I'll refrain. Thank you, though.
Okay.
First of all, I appreciate the presentation. Very informative, way beyond my head right now as we sit here and consider some of these things. Number one, who will have the ultimate decision as to whether to move forward with this? Number two, I would suggest before we even consider it, if we're ever considering this, I would want input from students and faculty and the whole administration.
But how does that work? This is an information item only, so we're not acting on this. There's no resolution or anything like that. This, you know, did pass the House previously, likely to pass the House again in the Senate and be signed into law. But it's just a good idea. So the idea is if we think it's a good idea and there's good ideas here, they could be adopted by the administration now without any action on our part. And they're probably already considering an awful lot of these things anyway. So this is not to say that these aren't going on at Carolina, likely are. And that's why the financial model shows us receiving additional funding under this by the federal government in 1.8 million recurring. But it could be a higher number if we were doing more things. And there's a, so there's an incentive to do this as well. Any other? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Student Ranger Program presentation. One of the issues when you have an agenda that becomes part of the, or gets approved layer in the game is we had conflicts. So Chief James is at a training and standards committee meeting in Raleigh right now. But we do have Sergeant Davis with the Community Safe Walk Program, which is Carolina's version of the Student Ranger Program. At my time on BOG, I worked with Chief Baker in Charlotte. And if any of you know Chief Baker, he's another no-nonsense guy that really is concerned about safety. He was there when they had the 2019 shooting that occurred on UNC Charlotte's campus and two lives were lost, many other people injured. But a student Riley Howard tackled the gunman and took him down, saving lives of his classmates. This is not for, to advocate for students to be involved in crime solving. This is more or active engagement. This is an idea of taking our Safe Walk Program and our Student Internship Program and expanding that. And the objective is to create a pipeline for the workforce. It's one of the most difficult jobs to recruit for because it involves dangerous situations. Officers risk their lives. There've been some issues with public sentiment being very harsh. And for all those reasons, it's very difficult to recruit and attract. And we've gone out of our way at the system level and at the university level to provide the resources that they need. It's the fund the police uh pen. Um, but it's still difficult to recruit. So the idea is that you would utilize students who have an interest in career law enforcement or military or just want to help others to solve some of those workforce shortages. These are non sworn in civilian folks uh that can do things like lead ins. Um, so they're not doing the traditional crime approach. They're they're observing and reporting um and uh assisting police and things that don't put them in harm's way. And they're learning more about the career along the way. Um, something that Chief James mentioned to me was that Coach Hubert Davis was actually a criminal justice major in ninety two, and I learned that Charles Marshall was as well. Um, and Paulette, I believe, was criminal justice too. So we've got a few criminal justice majors here, and that program was discontinued in in ninety six. Um, but there are lots of people interested in criminal justice or law enforcement, and this would provide the police um additional resources and also help guide people towards a career in law enforcement. Um, these are some of the slides from the uh UNC Charlotte Ranger Program. Again, very similar to our Student Walk Program. They have radios, they have uniforms, and they're doing things that um officers may have to spend their time doing like lead ins, um battery jumps or safety training. So it expands our reach and allows law enforcement to focus on what they do best and the um where sworn officer is required. So um Sergeant Davis is here, and Sergeant Davis, if you wouldn't mind, if you could tell us a little bit about the Safe Walk Program.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you. Uh, I'm currently the manager of the UNC Safe Walk Program. Now, this is a student run organization that provides another safe transportation options for any UNC affiliate after hours. Um, they currently operate Sunday through Thursday, ten PM to two AM, and it's a student pair that will walk with you anywhere on campus and even nearby off campus apartment complexes as well. And so that's their primary function, but uh as we also mentioned, they also provide a visible presence as well. They operate in a uniform capacity. They are seen within our more highly populated areas on campus like the Student Union and all the libraries. They have a direct radio contact with our University nine one one center. They actually have an independent Safe Walk channel. And so that is monitored by one of our nine one one telecommunicators. And so they have many of the aspects already within this program. But their primary function currently is to provide that safe walking escort after hours for UNC affiliates.
Right. Um, so the idea would be to expand upon that program, kind of marry it up with what UNC Charlotte is doing and provide uh career path options. Uh, something else that Chief Ja- Chief uh James had mentioned was the idea of uh really working on how our transfer credit for law enforcement training at the community college level can come into the university. We do have a great education benefit program that we established at BOG a few years ago that provides for free education for our officers at uh all levels. Um, so uh, but if we had something that focused on their career, some of that may be as a move into administration, business level training. But criminal justice is another one. Social work may be another as well, or uh legal. Um, any, yes.
Trusty, how how many students participate in Safe Walk?
Currently, we're fully staffed at fourteen student employees.
Uh, yeah, of course. Uh just like uh, well, maybe not just like, but similar to taxis or Ubers, um what what is the uh, what is the time that it would take for someone to request that service and and have somebody there? And would you be able to have permanent stations uh like at the library or Student Union or other popular places uh to, rather than, you know, have to have them come from ten minutes away or whatever, but they they would be there. I think the utilization rate would obviously go up. I I I've done a lot of work with taxi companies, so I'm familiar, if if there's, there's one there, they're gonna get picked up, you know, but if there's not one there, the student may say, well, I'm not sure I'm gonna wait, so I'll just risk it or whatever. So is it, do you have a process of of having the 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 participants, the the students at certain locations?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, the Safe Walk Program is actually operated out of the Graham Student Union to actually have an office, Safe Walk Office within the Student Union. And then the two stations that they operate out of is Davis Library and the House undergraduate library, the two most populated areas at nine time hours. The Safe Walk website actually allows you to schedule a Safe Walk beforehand. And so that allows an individual who knows that they're going to want to go home at a certain time to already have that um Safe Walk scheduled beforehand. Uh, we currently operate in a two team capacity, and so there are times when both teams are currently on a Safe Walk, uh, but the uh they tend to be readily available at any time, and the ability to schedule beforehand also provides an option. Uh, additionally, this is just one other option of safe transportation. We do have our point to point shuttle systems. We do have on demand transportation services, and so there are other options out there if there is a time when we are seeing a high number of requests within our Safe Walk Program.
I think in Charlotte, they've got additional transportation options like um a golf cart that can transport people around too. And they use that for, use that sort of transportation for their student Rangers. Uh, people quickly get around campus to deal with um, you know, lead in or break ins or things like, or I mean, a lead in or um taking a report for something like a break in. Trusty White?
Um, this is great. Thank you for being here. Um, what is the supply and the demand as far as Safe Walks? And and then also, is that something that, I know you said you could go to the website, but you could link to Carolina Ready, the app that it was, I guess, doing the same thing.
Yes, the Carolina Ready Mobile Safety App allows you to access the Safe Walk webpage directly through there, which will then allow you to schedule a walk. I don't have specific numbers, uh, like a walks per day. It does depend on a variety of factors, one, just the number of requests, but also if a team is walking a uh student to an off campus apartment, that time is going to increase dramatically as opposed to maybe an on campus residence hall. But I will say that the amount of downtime that we reported where somebody is just standing by is fairly low during a four hour shift. And so we do see a fairly high demand uh for this program.
Trusty Minkins?
I'm sorry, it's on from before.
Trusty Jones?
How uh, how do you identify students that participate in this program and vet them, and what kind of training and and whatnot do they uh undertake to become a part of?
Yes, absolutely. So we do a lot of recruiting towards the beginning of each semester when a lot of students are working, are looking for some sort of employment capacity. Uh, the students will be present during our Fall Fest to advertise their services, but also to recruit as well. Uh, we recruit through the Heal Life webpage as well to offer opportunities for students who are uh on that webpage. And as well as part time job fairs, other capacities as well. I mean, I'm actually a product of a similar service. I was a a um UNC student several years ago and operated within the, at that time it was called uh Student Patrol within the UNC Security Services. And I found out about that through a part time job fair here on campus. And so just accessing those routes um for part time student employees has allowed us to get up to uh full employment at this time. Uh, we go through a variety of trainings, basic campus safety, understanding your campus safety options on campus, but also responsible employee training as well. Um, even prior to the policy change, they were taking uh responsible employee training as well, understanding reporting uh uh responsibilities. There have been some incidents where a student will actually disclose um to one of our Safe Walkers, and they go through the proper channels of making sure that that um incident is reported through me and then following up through the E S C office. So they go through all the training focused on campus safety as well as reporting responsibilities as well.
Do you have enough students currently to build a demand? Not the number that you have hired to serve in that capacity, but are there enough to meet the 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 demands on campus for that service?
I would always encourage growth, and that's what we're always looking for. I think the ability to maybe position a third team on a south side of campus, perhaps some more of a health affairs areas. Um, Health Science Library is heavily populated at night. That would ideally be my third location, and I require a third team, and so I would need more personnel at that time. Uh, the ability to operate additional teams on uh Friday and Saturday as well. Uh, campus does not stop on those two days, and so the ability to operate that service seven days a week is also a goal of mine, and that would additionally, of course, require um additional resources and personnel.
Chair Prior? Would the program allow for uh a student who's graduated but lives in Greensboro and follows these issues very closely, a a volunteer role?
Absolutely. There there's no distance requirement, so as long as you can make it to your shift, we will happily hire you.
Uh, that's funny. Good one. Right? If there's nothing further, thank you very much, Sergeant David.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
I'm gonna stay. So the last item is a discussion of deferred maintenance and facilities cost. Um again, it's easier to get people to come in and speak when it's not the day after the election, coming in from different areas, but um, I think this kind of says um most of what we need to know about facilities. We have one billion dollars in deferred maintenance out of a real estate portfolio that arguably is valued somewhere in the four to six billion dollar range. So um, we talk about having solved a hundred million dollar structural deficit, but just one tenth of this each year is a hundred million dollars. Um, but we keep building new buildings, and there's a uh, there's a book that uh Dr. Richard Vedder, who's a professor emeritus of economics at Ohio University. I saw him at uh their discussion of their um civic life and leadership um programs that were being rolled out in Ohio recently. And he wrote the book, Restoring the Promise, uh Higher Education in America, and he has a chapter called The Edifice Complex. And he makes a few points. And uh, I'll read from the book um since he can't be here. I make five major points. First, largely because of antiquated and inadequate accounting techniques, universities typically vastly underestimate, understate the true cost of their buildings and their upkeep. Second, the politics of universities lead universities to often skimp on routine maintenance, leading many of them to have lots of buildings in a somewhat poor state of repair and functionality. Third, there's a gross u- underutilization of building space in the modern American institutions of higher education, suggesting that in one sense, there's been vast overbuilding of structures. Fourth, buildings and landscapes surrounding them can be and are often very successful recruiting devices as enrollments wane. The edifice complex develops where university administrators clamor for new facilities as admissions recruiting device. And fifth, the edifice complex often leads universities to incur large debt burdens. Burns that in an era of falling enrollments and possibly rising interest rates may be very difficult to service for some uh relatively poor schools. The effect of all this is that universities often ignore that their buildings impose real and rather substantial cost. These schools ignoring these costs often claim they are breaking even or operating in a modest, modest, modest budget surplus, the nonprofit equivalent of making a profit, when in fact they are not covering the hidden but very real cost arising from the fact that buildings like people have a certain life expectancy and that ultimately they need to be replaced or renewed at considerable expense. So this is an academic insider economist looking at why this occurs, and there's a financial reason, right? I mean, we're, we get new buildings from the state, a capital project. We don't count that in our operating budgets. Um, when people line up to get a new building, they want the nicest, biggest building they can get. Um, because you're getting, you know, one gift free, and you want to get everything you can out of it. And if you want a new building, one of the best ways to get a new building is to have a building that's falling apart on you. Um, like we got the Scratch and Dent Tour at the Ackland when we were giving that tour um a couple of years ago. So this concept is really to address this, a billion dollars of deferred maintenance. And what do we need to do to start um charging the schools or the departments with a number that accounts for the maintenance and the upkeep and the cost of those facilities? Normally, in my business, that would be rent. So for my operating businesses like my restaurants, even though I own the real estate, I charge that unit an operating rent to factor that in because the real estate isn't free. If we were going to, let's say, scale up and add five thousand more students, we would need to address facility cost. Um, and need to factor it in. So there needs to be a financial transparency to the schools and to the university for these huge assets, you know, four to six billion dollars of assets. We're not really accounting for it. Um, and it's not showing up in our operational lines. Now, Nate and I have spoken about this previously, and Nate, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on um, some way, you know, we talked about whether or not you could gross up rents, um, kind of an internal rent uh to factor this in, or find some way to incent units to to be mindful of real estate, facilities cost, facilities maintenance, personnel, and repairs.
Yeah, sure. Um, thank you for, thank you for raising this this point and this concept, and I'm I'm happy to address some of it. I I think uh one, it's it's very much a shared goal. So what's important, I think, is we recognize optimizing space. We 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 have been prioritizing work toward that. To deferred maintenance, we're prioritizing, these things are linked, right? To your point. Um, we have a responsibility really to manage our space and to be able to to really free up dollars to make progress on the deferred maintenance side. I, this is one of the, this is one of the approaches, charging some type of rent and improving incentives for units to manage. This is something we're actively evaluating. But I I think, I I'm not sure we tell the story enough, and and how we got here is really important. The the space utilization and what's happened on the campus, we used, we really, how space has been allocated is very ad hoc. We did not have data. We did not have a governance structure around this. We set out a couple, you know, really in the last year or two, really took this on. I think the board deserves a lot of credit for bringing um a priority to this. But a- also the chancellor, we had some conversation with you about classroom utilization. You remember that discussion a year or two ago where we first started to really go through some of that data. We actually have some of this information now. And uh, I I think we've really improved some of those areas, and it's allowing us to have this kind of conversation now where we're looking at different approaches to it. What we want to make sure is the incentives, how we charge, what the rates are, does it really cause a unit to to to, does it incent the right behavior? Are they motivated to do that? And we've been looking at what's happening across higher ed and starting to evaluate some of those approaches um to to see whether that, whether something like that might work. So we're, we are very actively looking at this.
UNC G's um business school, Bryan School, did a neat program where they charged rent internally. And it was interesting when you start charging rent, how many people went from wanting a corner office that was expensive to uh own the wall that was uh much less expensive. Chair Prior?
I I appreciate you bringing this up. I think this is really important. Uh, I wish we had more time to go into it in fuller sort of way. I just would like to um ask you or the chancellor, and the chancellor and I have a mutual friend in Raleigh who specializes in restoring and rehabbing old buildings. And I was in a meeting with this friend um in uh an Institute of the Environment Board of Visitors thing. And there, of course, we're talking about the need to have a new building. And our friend who's not prone to get animated, got very animated and said, we don't need a new building. We've got plenty of buildings. That's not the problem. We need to be able to restore and rehab the existing. We need to be able to restore and rehab the existing buildings we have in a more cost efficient way and utilize what we have." And my question is, it seems that there's always a reason why it is more cost efficient to just demo it and build a new building. But is there, is there a way where you can actually restore or rehab some of these buildings at a price point that might make the deferred maintenance number of $1 billion less onerous?
Yeah. Short answer is it depends. Subject near and dear to my heart, space utilization, capacity utilization. And we need to get better at utilizing our existing space, understanding how we use it, refurbishing it and renovating it when appropriate. We're doing that with the I T S Manning space rather than build a new school, a new building for the School of Data Science and Society. A lot of employees who are working for I T S were moved to remote work, freeing up the space for School of Data Science and Society. But any given case is going to depend on how old the building is, what it was used for in the past, what your intended use is. But this is exactly the way we need to be, need to be thinking.
I think there's also the potential for variable based pricing, looking at off peak hours too. And if we look at variable price for a degree, if you attend on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, let's say, when buildings are sitting empty, you've got maybe the potential for that. Or, you know, like in summer school, we talked about as well, where you've got space sitting empty and you could utilize it and offer a discount. It's what airlines do every time we fly, right? If it's busy, you pay more. If it's not, you pay less. Same thing with hotels. Vana isn't here, oh, Vana's right there. So Vana knows that as well. Other comments? Well, we're finishing right on time. So thank you, everyone. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. We stand adjourned.
And appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this committee today, please identify yourself at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, I will ask Chris McClure to please call roll.
Chair Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Turner, Mr. Bolick, Mr. Briner, Mr. Codis, Ms. Lloyd, Mr. Pryor. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open minutes of the September 18th, 2024 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open meetings from September 18th, 2024? Do I get a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to review and approve the revisions to the charters of the Office of Internal Audit and the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee. Dean Weber is here to present this item. Mr. Weber?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, chancellor and guests. As indicated, we're meeting here today to review and recap both charters that support the governance structure of the Office of Internal Audit. That's the Internal Audit Charter and the, and the charter directly related to your role in this committee, the Audit Compliance and Risk Management Committee Charter. As we discussed in the September committee meeting, we, we prefaced the, the process of the Institute of Internal Auditors adopting new global standards, supporting the way we do business. The last update had occurred about 15 years prior. So the new standards are going to be coming into effect on January 9th, 2025. So we've been working over the course of the last six months or so to look at our processes and make sure that what we're doing align with the expectations of these new governance standards. Our office is required to follow the I A standards. You might ask, why are, why are we concerned with this? Well, there is state statute, Article 79, Section 143, that prescribes that all internal audit departments across the state must follow the mandate set forth by the I A. So we are legislatively required to comply with these standards. Think if I can get on the right slide here. Apologize for that. There we go. Perfect. Let's begin by addressing the internal auditing and how the board, senior management and the Office of Internal Audit, really, we all partner together to support organizational success. Some of the things that we've just talked about in the strategic initiatives meeting, spatialization, fleet management as well, other areas. Audit's actively engaged in assessing and supporting leadership in, in doing reviews and providing feedback timely to help management make informed decisions. In this context, the governing charters outline the board's, excuse me, ability to provide oversight, support senior management in achieving organizational goals and objectives, and the ability of, of the university to create, protect and sustain value in the course of doing its business. The global internal audit standards provide guidelines for the practice of internal auditing. And as I said before, there are foundational element for assessing and improving the quality of internal audit work. These standards highlight the necessary relationship among the board, executive leadership and the audit function, offering opportunities for interaction and collaboration among the parties. Appropriate governance is essential to the audit function and, and our success in, in the work that we do. While the chief audit officer is responsible for the requirements related to governing the internal audit function, the activities of this board and senior management are essential to the internal audit function's success as well. The standards outline essential conditions necessary for effective partnership between the board, senior management and the C A E, and these points are addressed in both charters. Domain one of the standards talks about establishing a clearly defined purpose of internal auditing and a statement of adherence to the global standards. The redlined versions of the charter documents that you have today incorporate all the necessary changes to the mandates and, and required language to align with the new standards. This requires the chief audit officer also to periodically report on the department's conformance with the standards. This includes outcomes from both internal and external quality assurance reviews. We had our last one just last year, as well as key performance measures developed by the chief audit officer and reported to leadership, highlighting conformance with the standards and productivity of the department. And we achieve that through our year end annual reporting to this committee. Of the 15 principles supporting the standards, three speak to governing the internal audit function, principle six, seven and eight. Principle six indicates the board is to establish, approve and support the internal audit mandate. And the mandate is in essence, the charter that governs the work of the department. It empowers the internal audit function to provide to the board and senior management objective assurance, advice and consulting work, as well as providing foresight on issues through consulting work. Principle seven speaks to the board's responsibility for enabling the independence of the internal audit function. And here, independence is defined as the freedom from conditions that could impair internal audit's ability to carry out its responsibilities in an unbiased manner. Principle eight addresses board oversight appropriate to enable the overall effectiveness of the internal audit function. Let's focus for a moment on the required level of support from the board. And there's several bullet points here outlining establishing the necessary authority and role of the responsibilities for this office that's included in the charter, as well as an annual review of the charters. We come back each year to review them and improve them with any updates as necessary. It also defines the functional and administrating, administrative reporting relationship of the chief audit officer. It provides the authority for unrestricted access to data, information records necessary to complete audit work. And lastly, periodic discussion with the chief audit officer regarding any potential limitations in carrying out this work. And it provides an opportunity for private conversations as needs may arise in the course of completing audits. Principle seven addresses the required independence of the internal audit function. And the board supports this by maintaining a direct functional reporting relationship with the chief audit officer, supporting executive management to ensure that the chief audit officer employed to manage the work is well qualified, providing input and, and to support the chief audit officer's annual performance review, including the renumeration for the position. And lastly, approving any work of the chief audit officer that may go beyond the scope of internal audit to safeguard against any impairment of independence. Principle eight regards expectations of the board's oversight and encompasses several points that are really going to be addressed in the next three slides. The first being engaging in discussing organizational strategies, objectives and risks that assist us in determining our internal audit priorities. So making sure the internal audit work that we're doing aligns with the overall objectives of the university. The charter also addresses the requirements for the audit committee to determine the process for the board to receive audit communications, our reports, when they're issued, how they're issued and who receives those. And lastly, it includes the chief audit officer's ability to freely discuss with the board any disagreements with senior management that may arise or with stakeholders that would be deemed limiting in the completion of an audit. Further supporting the board's roles, it's, it's working with senior management to ensure the adequate resources exist to support the work. If resource limitations come into play, it's the role of this committee to have conversations with senior leadership to see and work with the chief audit officer to identify any resolutions. The chief audit officer is also expected to develop, implement and maintain a quality assurance program to include both internal and external assessments and review that process with the board. Internal assessments are conducted by the audit department and those occur periodically. Our external assessments occur once every five years. And the final point here is the board needs to approve the Office of Internal Audit's objectives annually. This is a new requirement and will be incorporated as part of the work plan approval process. The final point here is the chief audit officer is required to communicate the results of the external quality assurance review. And furthermore, the committee should receive the results of any conducted review of, of the internal self-assessment, along with plans to address any deficiencies. We captured that at our January meeting this past year. So in summary, although there's a lot of information, it's extensive, there's a lot of, you know, this isn't glamorous, it's ticking and tying and defining the governance related to internal audit. It is important. The global standards encompass many requirements, but when achieved, it really results in supporting the independence and the effectiveness of, of this operation here at the university. And I'm really happy that, you know, I think we have a very good relationship here between this board, the Office of Internal Audit and senior leadership here. It's been really a collaborative approach in the work since I joined the organization back in 2019. So with that, happy to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration of the updates to the charter.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean. So it sounds like you've been working on this since May, so I appreciate that. At first glance, because I'm just looking at it as of seven days ago. My question is, why are all the red pieces taken, taken out of the the proposed charter? And I don't really see an issue with anything that's being added, but specifically on the meetings portion of this, this, I guess, Raymond Naval four. It's changed to, you know, meeting four times a year as part of our meeting schedule, but the ability to call a special meeting, but then it's taking out people that could be invited when needed. Why are we removing that?
Well, I guess part of what we did when we worked through this process is to update it too to reflect the, the changes with ARM. And with that, so some of the deleted language relates to that. Some of the other deleted language was really moved within the charter to align with the current changes in the standards. So you'll see some that was taken out and some was put in. With regard to that, anyone is free to attend our meetings and we're real, really available to invite anyone that the chair or the chancellor would like to participate in any of those meetings. So that was just kind of from the perspective of it's, it's a right that already exists.
So understand the ARM piece, that makes sense. And if anyone's allowed to attend, then it, it would be fine to keep that they could, you could have the Office of the State Auditor and the Office of Internal Audit Staff. And I understand removing institutional integrity and risk management staff, but the others, it would make sense to keep.
We can certainly keep that in. That was a housekeeping item and yeah. Free to make that change, certainly. That raises a good point. We don't want to look like we're excluding anybody. So from that perspective, I appreciate your feedback on that.
Marty was, was ahead of me.
Yeah, I, I had similar concerns to Trustee White. You know, obviously the way this committee has operated over the last, since its inception, is audit and risk management. And so we've, we've had a lot of things that have come up that have been risk management issues. And so I understand the audit standards out there changing, but it doesn't necessarily change this committee's charter, which is broader than that. So just because part of it is audit, we can still be in compliance with audit standards, but we can still discuss risk management, including public safety, which has been a, a big topic for this board. And I feel like we've made a lot, covered a lot of good ground. So I'm not a huge fan of kind of parsing that out or moving that. And I'd like to kind of better understand why, because I think we've been very effective to, to improve public safety. And then to Randy's point, meetings, I think we've got to be able to call people that we need into the meetings. And I'm not sure why we change that. Whether that's calling in Associate Vice Chancellor Derek Kemp or Chief James or others related to risk management and safety outside of the audit function, because those don't report up to audit.
You're correct. That, that's right. And, and you raise a good point. I mean, hand in glove, internal audit work very closely with, with ARM when it was in its existence. We support and did a lot of the legwork and groundwork identifying the top five risks of the university, for example, and reporting back on that. And really within the standards, our audit programs need to be developed based on risk. So we do our own risk assessment and that's how we arrive at the, the projects that populate our work plan each year is through an exhaustive risk assessment process that we do and, and complete discussions. So
And not to interrupt, I understand that and understand that, that that becoming part of a different function. I guess replacing that would be maybe Chief James in that role then? And maybe it should be added back in that we include him in this or some other function so that if we want to continue, people do the work we've been doing over the last couple of years. And what's that?
I mean, I would imagine
Outside of just audit, we've been focused on public safety as well.
The chief, right?
Yeah.
So.
So could we perhaps take a stab at adding, with the chance of permission, of course, adding that back in so that we can continue not only just the audit, but also the public safety element of this committee?
I think you're suggesting Darrell might be the best person.
And Charles.
No.
Chair Prior?
I was just gonna agree with both Trustee White and Trustee Codis. I think and appreciate your willingness to reconsider on section four, adding the language back in or the bulk of it that's currently redlined. So thank you.
Yep, certainly.
Any other questions? Okay. I'm gonna, because we have changes and corrections, do I, do we need to approve this right now? Or should we say approve with?
I think we could approve it with the discussed changes.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve with the discussed changes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? No, motion carries. If there are no other item, further items for the committee's consideration, we will adjourn without objection. Oh, I'm sorry. Following item will be added to the consent agenda for approval of, by the full board tomorrow. Okay? And I think we go on break now? Okay.
Thank you.
Committee on External Relations. As chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. All right, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair White?
Present.
Vice Chair Ballantyne?
Here.
Mr. Blaine? Mr. Bryan? Mr. Kalapa? Mr. Codis? Mr. Meekins? Mr. Patel? Mr. Pryor? Ms. Taylor? Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes of the September 18th, 2024 meeting. To have a motion to approve the minutes. So have a second? All right. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The motion carries. And this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow. The next item is for information only, and we will have a legislative update from Chris McClure. Thanks, Chris.
It's not really a legislative update, more just an update from last night. This is nothing really new and exciting. Most of you have, unless you haven't seen a news story or a TV today, you have seen most of this, but wanted to walk through some key races in North Carolina Legislative and Council of State races, just so that the board would have some information. Couple of high points. Voter turnout in North Carolina was 73% last night. That's over, right at 5.7 million ballots total cast in the state of North Carolina congressional races. Here you'll see the congressional races. Those in Carolina blue are alums of Carolina. You see five of our congressional, five members of our congressional delegation are alums of Chapel Hill. The current congressional delegation, this is as of right now, Congressman Davis is leading the North Carolina's first congressional district. It has yet to be called. All indications are he will retain his seat. So the Democrats will have four of the congressional races in North Carolina. Republicans will have 10 of those seats. Council of State, as mentioned earlier by trustee Cottis, we have two members of this board are elected. Trustee Briner, treasurer-elect, trustee Bolick, who stepped out as auditor-elect. There you see, we are well represented. UNC Chapel Hill is well represented on the Council of State. Governor-elect Stein, Lieutenant Governor-elect Hunt, Attorney General-elect Jackson, Secretary of State Marshall, Auditor-elect, Treasurer-elect. As we mentioned, Superintendent of Public Construction-elect is Mo Green. He's new in that role. Insurance Commissioner is reelected, Agriculture Commissioner Troxer reelected, and we have a new Labor Commissioner Luke Farley, who is an alum of UNC Chapel Hill. If things hold as they are, and some of these races are being, are too close to call at this point, but the Republicans will have 71 seats in the House. Forty-nine Democrats, as I said, there are some that are too close to call. So the Democrats will have gained a seat, breaking the supermajority. The Republicans in the State Senate picked up a seat, so they will retain their supermajority plus a seat. Some key races that are important to higher education. Mike Lee in trustee Ballantyne's home area of Wilmington was a race that was closely watched. He is an alum of UNC Chapel Hill, somebody that is a higher ed chair. He retained his seat. Senator Lisa Barnes, who is also Chair of Education Committee in the Senate, retained her seat. Those are two that we, that were being closely watched throughout the state. In the State House, there were some, they were closely watched, none really that were particularly on the education side, with the exception of Representative Tricia Cotham, who is in House Education Chair. And as of now, she defeated her opponent by 300 votes. So that's within a margin that could be recounted, but it looks like she will retain her seat in the Charlotte area. Statewide judicial elections, there was a Supreme Court seat flipped. Appeals Court Judge Jefferson Griffin, it looks like will win that seat. As you can tell, that is a very narrow margin. It's a right at 10,000 votes. So most likely it will, there'll be a recount, but as of right now, Judge Griffin is leading that. And he is an alum of UNC Chapel Hill. And we, one of the new Court of Appeals Judge Tom Murray, who's a former member of the North Carolina House, is, took a seat on the Court of Appeals. He is an alum, and two incumbent members of the Court of Appeals won elections. That is a quick summary. Like I said, this is something you all have been intimately involved in. I know I'm glad to answer any questions. There are others sitting around this table that can answer the questions much, probably as well, if not better than I can. But any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Trustee Bolick, you riled the room when we congratulated you earlier.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, our next informational item is to hear an update from Michael Endreson, Vice Chancellor for Development. There you are. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good afternoon, Committee Chair White and the rest of the Board of Trustees. It's great to be with you. I will keep my comments brief, but hopefully interesting, maybe even entertaining. Next slide, please. We have just completed Q1 of our fundraising year, and I'm delighted to report that we're seeing a very strong Q1. And coming off of last year, we discussed at our last meeting, there was some concern about momentum within our donor community, and I'm pleased to report with just over $100 million in Q1, not only do we have a significant increase over the previous year, but we also have a holding firm with our five-year average. I will point out the five-year average is under the old accounting model, so in fact, we are doing better than that. Next slide, please. On the cash side, we also see an equal appropriate increase as well. Next slide. So much more to say in our January meeting as we close the first half of the year. What I thought I'd do next is just give you a glimpse of some of the things we've been doing in preparation for the next campaign. Next slide. So you heard me talk a bit about at the last meeting about not only decline in activity and totals, but the kind of analysis we're doing amongst our peer set. And as you know, we benchmark against the top 10 publics that are at the same scale that we are. Our consultants who have been with us for the past year came in earlier this fall and began to make a series of recommendations, one of which is that we look at scale. We are about 65 or so FTE smaller than the median of our peer. And to do that, we need to think about how would we grow? And I'm not here to propose that we have that solution or how we would finance that, although Vice Chancellor Kneppen knows I'm always looking for more budget. But we will come back as part of our campaign plan to address the question, are we the right size and are those individuals doing the right work? Next slide, please. I also mentioned, and I'm really excited to report that we spent much of the last year with our academic leaders, our deans predominantly, but those leaders who have fundraising as part of their portfolio, we spent a year training and talking about our industry. But on May 7th, we kicked off a six-month homework assignment, which was due last Friday, November 1st. And these are the four questions we asked our deans, really around vision and fundraising priority. Question one, describe your unit over the next decade. Question two, talk about fundraising in support of that vision. Three, go through the discipline process of prioritization of students, faculty, programs, and facilities. And number four, assign yourself a fundraising goal for the next campaign. Those reports were received last week. I haven't actually seen them yet, but we will spend the next month to internally reviewing them, refining them. And then in late spring, you'll see there April 24 and 25, and May 1 and 2, those two weekends, we will be asking them to present, almost like a shark tank, if you will, but a 10-minute pitch with a 10-minute Q and A, reach of our deans, and we've convened a committee of about 35 volunteers. We'll certainly invite this board to join as well, and it'll be a Friday, Saturday, over two weekends, and should be good fun. But more importantly, we'll refine that fundraising objective going forward. Next slide, please. Also want to give you a glimpse of what we're doing around technology. I mentioned we hired a executive director of a digital-first strategy. He's been busy at work for the first six months. Next slide, please. About 11 years ago, in advance of the last campaign, we replaced a 30-year legacy database warehouse that was homegrown with a standard platform. It is in year 12. These are typically seven-year life cycles on these databases. We know we're on borrowed time. But what we've discovered is that mainframe, that data warehouse is not only obsolete from sort of modern-day technology, it's really hard to use mobile technology, which are most of our fundraisers use. It's incredibly cumbersome and adding new data, and there's massive amounts of data that we're now collecting. And it just really isn't functionally ready for what we expect a big growth to the next campaign. So we have just purchased a new software, what we call a fundraiser overlay. It's a third-party software that will draw that data from that archaic and old system and then make it much more effective in how development officers do their work and how we measure their work. And I don't have a demo to show you, but you should expect to see that once that contract is completed and that software is in place. It doesn't solve the problem of a new database. That is something we're going to have to think about, but we're not prepared to really talk about that in detail. Haven't done the analysis. We just know it's coming. Next slide. In addition, we've been asking ourselves, what are some of the downsides of not being very digital-minded? We clearly lack a cohesive strategy. We're very decentralized in our decision-making. We're not using data in the way that we need to be. We're inconsistent in our integration. And we think there's a huge opportunity for realignment of our tools and technologies. I'll give you one stat, just in central development, which we call UDO. We have 22 different giving websites. How do you know which one to go? There's another 80 across the campus. We've got to figure a way to make it more donor-friendly and more user-friendly for donors to quickly make gifts when they are inspired to do so. Next slide. I also want to give you a little glimpse of how we're measuring our own performance. And I mentioned at the last meeting that we were concerned that there was a bit of a decline in activity. Obviously, you can see from our Q1 totals, we're seeing a nice bounce back from last year. But one of the reasons we're seeing that is we're asking our fundraisers to make more asks. I'll remind you, major gift fundraising is a gift of one's asset, typically of 100,000 or more. Annual giving is typically a gift of one's income and done annually. So smaller gifts and bigger gifts. We have staff doing both. Next slide, please. So we looked at the last five years, and I'm looking at that MGO, Major Gift Officer. On average, we made 4.6 asks a year. That's not okay. Good question. We're working on it. I don't want to be flippant about it. There's a lot of great work we do, and asks are not the only thing we do. Relationship development we do, activities on campus we do. But we know we can do better, and I'll preview what that number should be. Next slide. We also looked at our peer set and said, where do we sit among the 10? And you can see that we're third from the bottom in terms of asking per fundraiser. So over the summer, spring and the summer, we updated, next slide, please, our expectations. And we have them for different kinds of work, but again, I want to focus on the MG. We expect our fundraisers who do gifts of 100,000 and above to make 15 asks a year. Seven of them should be yeses. They should raise about $1 million. And they should visit 125 times to individuals. Performance metrics are now driven by this chart. Every fundraiser has been trained against this chart. They know what they're being expected to do. And this is part of that increase in expanding our expectations for our fundraisers. So has it had an effect? Next slide. This is the number of asks we've seen in the first three months. The solid line is the number from last year at this time. So you can see we're clearly exceeding last year's activity with these new metrics. There were some metrics, but they were not consistent across the 26 fundraising units. And they had changed over time. And so we put a small group together representing both central development and some of the units. And this was the culmination of their work, and we put it in place on July 1. Next slide. Okay, so that's a lot. Quickly, you can read more of the data in your packet. Happy to talk with you in between as well. I thought we'd just end with really the fun part of what we do. And that is what does philanthropy actually do every day for our students and our faculty? So three gifts to highlight that we just recently received. And I am really embarrassed to talk about this. I'm going to look at the provost. We are delighted to celebrate a seven-figure gift from the Schmidt Futures Fund to support a new Argus Array Telescope. Do we know where it's at? Scopes, multiple scopes? And they, and Would you like to give us a little more detail? This is Professor Law's project, but I would love for you to say something.
All right. Well, the chair indulges me. I know we're on a tight schedule. I see the look of fear that the astrophysicist is going to talk. All right. Just two minutes. Astronomers, astronomy is not an experimental science because we can't touch the things that we measure. As part of the, and we don't measure that many things. It's about six. One of them is time. As part of the monitoring program for nuclear blasts, there were some satellite launches to detect cosmic rays. I mean, gamma rays. And they were looking at the earth to see if somebody set off a nuclear explosion. And they started to go off immediately after they were launched, because in space, there are lots of big explosions that make gamma rays, and those are the gamma ray bursts. And then late 90s, we figured out what they were. But what happens is a star that collapses gives off 10 to the 53 erghs of energy all at once. Erg is a kind of socialist French unit in the metric system that we don't use much. I'm not going to put it into BTUs. I'll just say it's as if the entire energy of the sun for 10 billion years, all of the energy the sun gives off for its whole lifetime, comes out all at once. And these things flash for a few days and they're gone. So there's a national project to build what I'll call is the battleship or the aircraft carrier to study these things. It's called the Vera Rubin Telescope. It takes 30 years for these projects to develop and be formed. And it will be great at looking at optical transience, things that go bump in the night but are there. So such a short amount of time that you can't measure them because you didn't know what happened. This is like the littoral vessel that comes in at the last minute and says, we can do the bright ones with a different model. So the big telescope being built in Chile is a bucket to collect as much light as you can to see very faint sources. But the brightest ones use a telescope about this big. And that's an array of telescopes about this big that instead of collecting light from one place in the sky, point, they're all pointed, they cross over through a little hole in the top of that dome, and they look at essentially the whole sky at once with a bunch of small telescopes. So they can't see all the faint objects, but those are harder to follow up on anyway. They're going to find all the good stuff, all the bright and fast stuff before this other project can even be finished. And that project has been on the drawing board since I was a grad student. So this is Nick Law's answer to the whole astronomical community. UNC and our collaborators will build this really sexy, fast version that's complimentary to the national facilities, but it will again show UNC's prowess at building equipment that does really interesting things for, it's literally like five decimal places cheaper than the big project. Is that too much? Did I? All right. So that's why you panicked. You put the astrophysicist up here, you're going to get the
In case you had any question why I was not going to describe it. You now know exactly why. It's a really cool and sexy telescope. It's going to be in the state of North Carolina. Well, what?
Needs to be somewhere dark with dry weather.
And up, maybe?
Probably Texas.
Oh, okay. Well, it's going to be somewhere. Next slide, please. I will point out that was a first gift from Schmidt Futures, and we understand that it will likely be several following. So it's a really great new opportunity for Carolina. Also delighted just to celebrate a gift that we received, a six-year gift to establish a curator in residence at a Carolina Performing Arts. Of course, a Genius Award winner. You can see his name, John Gendelsman, will be on campus and will be curating seven performances as part of the 20th anniversary of our CPA. So, and then lastly, just noted, note that it's the 20th anniversary of our Carolina Covenant, the scholarship program, which is the envy of the country. We recently had a new $600,000 gift from an anonymous parent, but many donors have given to the Carolina Covenant. And we are just thrilled that philanthropy can be a part of our core mission of academic excellence and affordability. That's my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
I actually have, um, with the, by the way, thank you for the presentation and thank you for what you're doing. Cause I think it's very much needed. On the, the full-time employee that one of those first charts when you're comparing to the public and the private cohorts, or the median, the median. And the unit advancement, full-time employees, does that include Rams Club and Morehead Cane?
I believe it does. And I think it also includes Carolina alumni, formerly known as G A A.
Okay.
So that would make us even smaller by including that.
And then with those three, are they close to 50% of that number or what, what's the breakdown?
I would say UNC Health and the Rams Club and G A A are about 30%.
Okay.
Of the total. That's a.
Educated guess.
Yeah, yeah. And on the new data software, um, will, will the other unit schools be using that? I mean, uh?
No, it would be for everyone. So we have, the data warehouse we have now is for everyone. It's called Data. It's on a proprietary higher education platform. Candidly, Salesforce is eating up the market. Uh, all of our peers are going in that direction. We're not prepared to know the timing and the scale of, of the kind of transition we'll need to do. But it is coming because it's on its last lifecycle. But it will be for everybody. That's part of the plan.
No, no questions. Anybody else have any questions?
So just, just following up on uh, your major gift proposals slide. You said that you were asking the staff to make more asks.
Correct.
And they've obviously responded and it's resulted in more money.
Correct.
So it, it does beg the question, why wasn't that happening previously? And I know that there are other activities, but I'm just curious like what? Could you give any color on that?
Yeah, I think it varies from unit to unit and from time period to time period. I think if you look at the data from 2020 to 2021 to 2022, that final year in the campaign. There was actually a really high watermark. So that's why we look at the five year average when we do this, this analysis. I think it's easy to be distracted from things other than asking people for money. And so we're trying to refocus that these particular jobs. And there are other jobs that we use to do other things, event planning and data analysis and gift processing. And, but these positions are external facing fundraisers and we expect them to be out asking people for money.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you. Mike, um, our next informational item is to hear an update from Cameron Barwell, Vice Chancellor for Communications. Hello.
Thank you all. Thank you, Trustee White. It's an honor to be here and to represent the work of our talented communications team, as well as the communicators all across campus who do amazing work for the schools and units. So before I get into what we've, a little bit about our strategy and what we've done. I think it's important to talk about the, the communication landscape that we live in. Because our, our jobs are changing all the time. And as you can tell that your personal way of getting information has changed a lot over the last few years. Our jobs have changed a lot as well. And so when we look at the landscape that is operating in, in communications, you have all been getting inundated by it uh, during the election. So you're definitely seeing modern communications uh, at its height. And hopefully you'll have a little bit less noise on your phone in the next few weeks. So what does this mean for us as university and communicating? It means that there's a lot of chaos. There's a lot of noise. There's an endless supply of information and it's really, it's getting harder and harder for people to understand what's accurate. What is the source of the information? What are the motivations? It's, it's getting harder and harder to sort through that. And so for a university, it's really a time of great opportunity and challenge to communicate on behalf of an institution. And really any brand. So the challenges uh, will continue. AI. AI will change communications. It will change everything else. But along with all the other uses of AI, it will come with challenges, but it will also come with opportunity. And we're beginning as communicators to figure out, hey, how AI can be used in our work? And also be ready for the challenges that it may bring. A polarized environment is also a challenge. When you're communicating on behalf of the institution, because sometimes the debates over different things can shroud the incredible contributions of the university to the community, the state and the nation. And so it's our job to make sure that we're communicating the brand well. And making sure that in all of this noise, that our brand is consistent, aligned, strategic, and constantly reminding everyone that of Carolina's strength and promise. And so a lot of our strategies have been focused on making sure that we're harnessing our messages. This is a bit about the functions that are in our central university team. These are the different teams that we have and, and come together. I'll talk more about their work later, but this gives you a sense of what our functions are. This is what we've been working on over the last couple of years. We have been focused on how we build a proactive master narrative about the university. How do we um, come up with the things that we want to talk most about that are truly special about Carolina? We also reorganized and integrated the work of, of multiple teams, which I'll talk more about. We also built new tools and new digital strategies to get the news out in more effective ways in the modern landscape. And we also focused on how to make our messages more cohesive. And then uh, the latest efforts have been focused on building what will become uh, Carolina's first central marketing function, which we're awfully excited about. So integrated content, what do I mean by that? It's very easy when you have different groups. So you have a social media team or you have a content team, or you have an executive communications team. It's very easy for those teams to work in isolation and just work on, here's what I think I should put on, on social media today. But integrated content is much more powerful. So how we think about this is we, we scour the university, looking for the very best stories that, that the, the community would like to know about and show off what we're great at. And so we start with that storytelling opportunity. And rather than everybody just coming up with what story would I like to tell today? We bring those groups together to tell it in a multimedia way. So um, that means that the social media people are in connection with the people writing the stories for the well, who are in connection with the people doing executive communications. So that there's a cohesive message and you feel a surround sound. That way, if you see something on social media, it also looks like something that you've read in the well. So a good example of this was our, um, our, our material that we put out on the chancellor's installation. So you'll see here some of the results of our tactics. So we had several stories in the well and you can see how many people read those. We also had a special edition of the well newsletter that we put out right afterward. And then uh, videos are very popular. You'll see thousands of people um, viewed those videos. And then traditional media relations, lots of stories there. And then our social media channels. And so communications has become something that you used to write a press release and send it to the newspaper and they would put out the news. Now there are all these opportunities to spread the news yourself. And so um, you'll see here that a few hundred people got to attend this event and uh, experience that moment. But through our tools, we can share it with thousands more and we can measure how many people are consuming that. This is the work of many, many communicators working together. So, oh, sure.
So when you talk about integrated media strategy and, and, and you've got the content integrated. What, what is your, what is the uh, audience? Like, like what are your, what are your, what is your, what is your universe of audience? Like, for example, I mean, it's one thing to send out a presser to uh, Corey back there in the N and O. Right. And it's another thing to actually engage, um, for example, Mike Andrasian's uh, donor list. So how, how does that work? And are you working with, with development? And then the General Alumni Association, have they been cooperating? That type of thing. I mean, how does that integration work?
That's a great question. And I think uh, we consider all of our stakeholder groups. And we do need to communicate with them differently. And so later in the presentation, I'll show you some of the, the audience focused communication that we're doing. And in answer to your question, we are working very closely with Mike and his team and as well as collaborating with Veronica. And I think it's important that they, those are our alumni that we're communicating with. And it's good for us to be coordinating among ourselves. And so um, we, pretty soon I'll talk about a new product that we launched for alumni. Talked with the, with both of them, um, when we did that to see how it fit into their uh, current um, practices.
Chris, to your point, I, there, there are probably a lot of people that would, would know that Chancellor Roberts became permanent chancellor as much from TikTok or a reel on Facebook as they would reading it in the newspaper or watching it on channel five at six.
You're, you're absolutely right, which, which is, you know, frightening for those of us who grew up with newspapers. But it's, it's the way, it's the way information is shared now. And really, and you brought up different audiences, different audiences find the news in different places. And so our approach in modern comms is to cover the, cover the bases. Make sure that you're reaching out to those different audiences where they live and hope for surround sound, that they see it in more places than one. So another thing that universities often do is they communicate about all.
Marty had a.
Follow up on that prior slide. So um, you started with describing the polarized environment. And when I went to some of these different posts, I saw some polarized commentary obviously out there as well. What's your targeted audience? And what are the metrics for success for the marketing department? And who's engaging with the commenters? Cause I, I haven't seen, I've seen a push out with a post. But then I haven't seen any engagement where there's any back and forth. So if you push a post out, as an alum, I make a comment. But then you never hear a reply or never get any feedback on that. What's your strategy for engagement on social media when people are commenting? And if you're boosting posts, who are you boosting those posts to in terms of that targeted audience? And what are you trying to achieve?
We're always trying to achieve pushing positive messages about the university. When I talked about the polarized environment, it's, it's just a challenge for the university when there is a polarized environment. But we try not to get involved in that and really focus on what it is the university um, is doing for the world in our messaging. In terms of managing social media, um, we, it's, it's considered good practice on social media, not to get in to tit for tat with commenters. And so I think in the early days of social media, there was more engagement between university brands and individual commenters. I think things have gotten a bit away from that. We mainly put out, we mainly put out um, material about the university that we want everyone to know. We do identify the different audiences. We talk about it differently in TikTok than say we do in LinkedIn. We, we, those are different audiences that you're talking to and we package that same message in different ways. I would say in managing the comments that come up, we generally leave up any comment that is left on material that we put on social media um, for free speech reasons. But if, if we do have a practice of removing content that has comments that have nothing to do with the topic that we posted. And that is an industry standard across uh, universities. So if you're, if you have a post about something and someone is talking about the garage sale down the road, we, we, we do remove those comments.
And as a follow-up on metrics, so if let's say you had another million dollars to spend on marketing, what would you expect that the university would accomplish in terms of additional student recruiting? Or what's the, where would you see marketing moving the needle? How do you know if you're achieving it?
The great thing about marketing is you get a ton of data out of it. You start with a lot more data when you don't have a marketing function. And you also get a lot of data at the end of it. And I think what different, different universities or brands use marketing for different purposes. Some universities don't have the enrollment that we, the enrollment interest that we have. So they put a lot of their dollars towards driving interest in prospective students. Other universities do it to be present in a modern environment. In terms of if you're not out there as a, a brand in the, in the digital marketplace, you're just not there. And so there could be consequences to that that come from just not being known very well. So I think.
Just to maybe narrow that question down so I'm clear. If you had a million dollars to spend incrementally on marketing, where would you spend it? And what would you expect the return to the university would be? How would you measure that?
I think you would, I, I couldn't rattle off exactly how we would spend that million dollars. Because that's part of why you do the research to see what, what perceptions you're trying to change. And what, what tactics would move that perception in the direction that you want to. But um, pretty much every brand is spending quite a bit on building a digital marketing strategy. Because as I mentioned at the beginning, you're on your phone all day. That's where you're getting information. Digital marketing is a really efficient, affordable tool. And it allows you to know who's consuming your material. In the old days, if you put up a billboard, you don't know who's seeing it. But digital marketing is, is really effective. And so I think a good bit of the budget would go to that. In terms of, of figuring out if you're getting what your money is paying for. There's a lot of data that comes back from who's clicking on that, who's engaging in that. And if you put some kind of call to action, which could be just click on this to read our website. If you get a lot of traffic, that tells you that you're engaging that audience. So I think um, in the, in, in the situation of Carolina, I think we don't want to be left behind in not having a presence in that digital environment. We also want positive sentiment among all of our stakeholders and the rest of the world to know what Carolina is working on and, and changing the world for the better.
So let me, if I could follow up just on the digital marketing point there. In terms of you talking about, you know, who you're reaching targeting, what did, what, what did? Kind of unpack that if you don't mind. Because you know, my understanding, you can target digitally, but you're never really a hundred percent sure who's actually getting the message. So for example, if I was targeting a household that was a Carolina alum, it, it may go to their 14 year old kid, or it may go to, I don't know, grandma. It could. I mean, it just depends. So what, what type of sort of targeting data do you have in terms of what actual, where those digital images or videos or whatever content it is where they're hitting? What, what type of metric do you have to assure that, for example, if we're spending X amount of dollars, we're getting ROI back because we know it's hitting in a certain amount? I mean, we doing any polling or is there any follow-up? Or I'm just curious.
It depends on the tactic you use. So um, you know, uh, LinkedIn, for example, has very robust targeted digital marketing. And LinkedIn gives you a lot of data that comes back from that. Facebook, which is considered kind of a dinosaur in social media, it has really um, advanced targeting. So you can really see who looked at your material or who clicked on it, or who clicked on your website. So it really depends on tactic, tactic by tactic, where that data comes from. But um, oftentimes you'll work with what they call a placement agency that will put your messages in all kinds of places and then give you data back. And we think of um, there are so many opportunities now for digital marketing. It could be when you're pumping your gas, a message comes up and you will get data back from that based on um, you know, the agency that you've used. So it's, it's hard to answer a one size fits all. But I will tell you that once you get into this world, you get quite a bit of data that tells you exactly who you're talking to. I know that at Missouri, when we were um, working on prospective students, we, we would have an IP address in the same household that would send a message to the student about why you would want to attend the university and a different message to an IP address for their parent that would talk about ROI and return on investment. The students weren't as interested in that. They wanted to know what it was like to go to school there. So there's, there's lots of material here, but there's no one way to collect that.
So I'm sorry. I think we have a lot of interested questions on this topic, Perrin and then Julie, I do, yeah, just on the.
Thank you. I appreciate your being here this afternoon. Um, I'm not sure the best way to, I'm not in marketing, so I don't know the best way to really ask this question. But so my understanding is we have, you know, we're putting content out. And the idea behind this content is that it's going to present the university in a good light. Do we have specific objectives beyond views and clicks and things like that? In terms of what that positive message about the university is going to achieve? Whether that's fundraising or increasing the number of applicants or whatever it is? I'm just wondering, in addition, I mean, there has to be some structure behind simply putting positive stories out about the university.
Right.
And is it, I guess, kind of a follow on to that is, how are we using that to improve our overall brand? And I'm kind of wondering what, how we are branding ourselves to the world at large through this marketing campaign.
Yeah, I think to date we've largely used storytelling and, and also Carolina is a strong and historic brand. We recently did a survey with AAU and the, the results of that survey show that Carolina is a strong, respected brand across the state and beyond. And I think we see that in all the people who want to be here. But how have we done that up to now? We have, it, it's largely the, the historic reputation of the university that holds up a lot of that brand. It's also all the service we do across the state. It's, and it's also quite a bit of storytelling that we've done to date. We have used organic is what we call it if we don't pay for it. So we have used organic social media. We have used organic storytelling, which is we put it up on our website and then we ship it through social media channels. So, so there's lots of opportunities to tell your own story without spending money. Um, and I think that's largely what we have relied on. We've relied on a lot of communicators doing excellent storytelling all across the university and making sure that we pitch that to media and so forth. But I think there's, there's even more opportunity to go beyond that organic push, although it's quite powerful. I'll show you soon how large our, our organic social media channels are. It's quite large and powerful.
Yeah, I just had a question, um, kind of to what trustee Coates was talking about earlier. But does the university remove any sort of comments about like maybe it's people spreading disinformation or false news about something that the university?
You know, it's interesting with disinformation. I think this is a, this is a larger problem than just, or a larger question than just us in terms of disinformation. I mean, we will watch generally when you're managing social media, you try not to get involved because people are, are saying what they're saying. Oftentimes the social media strands will correct themselves. Someone will say something that isn't true. Someone will say, hey, that's not true or something in between. But I think general practices is if someone posts something that's very untrue and is, is a risk to people, there's a fire in this building. The, the best practice would be to message in that strand. That isn't true. This is what's happening. So I think, you know, disinformation and, and all of that, it's going to be quite, quite interesting. But generally, um, you know, people are pretty good on our, our, our strands, actually. It depends at the time, but we're, ours are, are pretty well easy to manage.
Do you have a word search? Uh, I mean, the storytelling, I appreciate, but what if someone missed a story from two months ago? How are they going to know, was that in the well? Was that there? Was it, where, where, where was that story? How can I find that story? I mean, I don't know if you have archives or if.
Yeah.
A word search. I wanted to search gamma rays, for instance, in a couple of months to learn about the multiple telescopes. You know, how would, how would I get that?
The best way is the search on the website. And if you click on the homepage, there's a button that says discover. It takes you to the well homepage. If you search the well, it will help, it will let you search all the content there. So. And we'd love that because we want our content to live on beyond the day that we send it out. Let me race through this a bit to conserve your time. One of the things you need to do, universities often have trouble narrowing their message. So big brands you know of say have sort of narrowed down what their brand stands for and what you're going to hear a lot from them about. Universities, because we're so good at so many things, we tend to have too many messages and it gets lost. So that you're not talking, you don't have a consistent message because you're talking about all the things. So we have organized ourselves around a few areas that we like to talk most about. And we have these same buckets of con, I would, I would consider them targets for content. We share these with our communicators all over campus and we ask them to write stories or to give us examples of times when we're doing that good thing. And so these are three areas that demonstrate things that Carolina is particularly good at. And so University of the People really gets into the fact that we have an affordable education for people in North Carolina. That if people have the will to come here, that there will be a way for them to pay for it. And so that gets into the excellence of the university available to the people of our state. Tradition of excellence. This was a kind of a focus area that we had focused on research. We were asking communicators to give us examples of excellent research. Not all the research, the most excellent of it. But the chancellor asked us to expand this bucket a bit and, and really focus on all the things that we're truly best at. And so that could be athletics, that could be research, that could be teaching in the classroom. But anything, a story that, that is definitely shows our, our national leadership. And then steadfast in our service, that's about service to state. So I, I hope over the last two years, you've seen all an uptick in all of our stories about how we serve the state of North Carolina, because we've been gathering and pushing those stories. So here's an example. This is a story of University of the People, the Covenant Scholars, excellent example. We want stories that every day prove these things to be true, that we can be shipping. And by aligning to these three buckets, we begin to show off what the brand is about and what we're, what's special about us. So here, tradition of excellence, this is fantastic research. And then service to state, here's one example. And when you're constantly proving these points all the time, it begins to sink in as received from the audience. So we have started new platforms and all of you are very well, are very aware of the well. Previously, we did not have a major spigot of news going to mass audience. We had social media, we had our homepage and we had a staff faculty newsletter. And so now the well serves a greater audience. It goes to all faculty, staff and students. And it also goes to external audiences, anyone who wants to subscribe. And we're constantly looking for more ways to push it to more external audiences. This gives us a chance to tell the university's narrative on a regular basis. And then recently we have a new addition going directly to alumni. The well comes out three days a week and some people love getting it three days a week. Board of visitors, they love having it. The alumni, that's a once a month where we, we put the stories that they would be most interested in once a month. We also launched the university's first universal calendar. Before that, you had to go to a bunch of websites to find out what was going on. Our division purchased a, a nice technology tool that allows the university to have a, a central calendar that you can actually put reminders on your phone and search. So that's been a really strong tool and we promote it through the well. So this is a bit about the well, it goes to 52,000 people. Its open rate is strong compared to industry. And these are the most popular stories over the last few months. I think the well does a lot of different things. The first thing that was most popular, we can do quite a bit of explaining change management for the university. So you saw it very popular about how we were complying with the UNC system's DEI policy. Our new class for the fall also very popular. And the rankings, people always love ranking stories. So these stories brought the most readership. This is a closer look at the calendar. The calendar has also had a lot of uptake. We have 2,000 people now across the campus using this tool and our team trains them to be able to do that. So definitely a, a new, and often the events are the most popular part of the newsletter. So people really are looking for ways to engage. Media relations. We are a high volume shop. We did 2,200 inquiries. One of the reasons why we're a high volume shop is we have a journalism school. And so we, you know, our team works with student journalists and national journalists. You have a pie chart there that shows you sort of where the inquiries, inquiries are coming from. We do a variety of different things. We provide statements, we provide interviews, depending on if people are available. But that gives you a sense of where the inquiries are coming from. In addition to that, we pitched stories that we hope media will pick up. And so this shows the stories that were most pitched and, and performed the, the best. We also do traditional press releases as well. And you have a few examples of some of the highest performing press releases. We also handle a lot of the inquiries when there are issues going on for the university. And so these are some of the major areas of inquiry during events for the university. Very proud of this group. They work really hard and the way they answer those questions is they go all over campus and work, and work with partners to make sure we get the best answers possible. Social media. This slide is really to show you that we talk to different audiences differently. So Facebook, this is the same story told in different ways. Facebook, X, TikTok, all different ways. You have to speak to those audiences, the way they can hear the information and you're going to be more successful at it. LinkedIn is, is a very powerful channel for us as well as Instagram. So when I talk about how powerful it is, you'll see on the right side, the growth of our social media audience. We have a million subscrib, we have a million people that we reach through social media. That is as large as really any of the major metros in the heyday of newspapers. We're up in the, the, for, for comparison, I think the New York Times is about eight million digital subscribers. So having a million people that you can reach is a lot. And so that is our major distribution for driving people back to the stories that we're telling. This is, this chart shows that we are bringing people into our content using social media. So you'll see the climb from 2022 to 2024. Those, those are people who are actually clicking from social media to read our, our university storytelling on unc.edu. Most popular on social media, again, it's a mix of things. The first item is the chancellor and provost talking about the expectations of civil discourse and peaceful protest on campus. Very popular on social media. Next one, Forbes named us a new Ivy. People are always interested in rankings, things like that. Even this was very popular for a different reason. It's a, uh, social media can be a place where people grieve together. And they can, and this was an item that was, this is an element of fun where you put music to images from 2024. So that gives you a sense of what people go to us for in social media. Again, a variety of purposes. I think you all have seen the videography. We are very blessed to have amazing photo video people. Their videos are super high quality. And this is an example of some of their stills, really important storytelling and visuals. And then unc.edu, we can also track how many people are going to our homepage. And this gives you a sense of those numbers and this is where they click the most. So you'll see the well is at the top of what people click on when they get to the homepage, but they also do functional things. UNC Creative is graphic design. This will be the team that will be translated into members of the new marketing team. These are the folks who do a lot of the graphic design digitally and print. And all of this material that you see out in the world is the result of their hard work. Visitor Center, we also run the visitor center on Franklin Street. And, and this many people came in a year for that tour. These are separate from the admissions tours, but we collaborate quite a bit with admissions in terms of script and so forth. The chancellor asked for us to work together across these tours. But these are for visitors who just want to see, learn about the university. And we, you can see, we have thousands of people come through and want to learn about Carolina. So what are we up to on marketing? So for about a year, we worked on collecting information from communicators throughout, throughout campus, asking them, what would a market, a central marketing function be that would be most helpful to the whole campus? So we came up with a proposal that we would start a market, an in-house marketing team that would be a central resource for all of campus. And when the chancellor got here, uh, one of the first things he asked me is what are we doing in marketing? And I was so glad to hear that question because we want to, we want to get into this space. And we've spent a year researching how best to do that. So what we're going to be looking at is having an internal marketing team. We are hiring a marketing leader who will help all of our campus develop a marketing strategy. So we are also going to be going through a brand exercise. And so this is a year long process. It starts with research and assessment of the brand, then an evaluation of marketing, brand positioning, and then ultimately rolling out the brand. This is common practice for universities all over the country. And I think it's a huge opportunity for us to have a data driven approach to where the Carolina brand is going next. And I hope you all will participate in that process. It involves interviews and surveys and, and collecting a lot of information from all stakeholders. In the meantime, we are getting, we are putting marketing out even before we build that infrastructure. And hopefully you've seen the new spot during athletic events on TV. Our team put this together and Imagine Your Heel print commercial is out there. We are also working on a campaign that will be out in market in the next few months, really focusing on affordability and excellence of the institution. And then we've also have a partnership with WCHL where the chancellor introduces people of excellence from campus and they do short interviews on radio, um, which is a pretty local distribution. But then we ship it out of our social media channels and it reaches many more people. So that is the end of my presentation. Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, so you, you sort of touched on it. And one of the things that was clearly prevalent at, at UNC, uh, when, when I joined the board was the, in, in many areas, budget included, but, but comms was certainly one of them. And, and that is the siloization of communication teams across campus. And I'm curious, you, you talk about bringing in for a centralized brand program. You know, I'm, I'm curious as to what, what we're doing with respect to coordinating. I mean, athletics has a robust communications team. You have a robust communications team. College of Arts and Sciences has a robust communication team. I mean, I could go on and on and on and on about the robust communication teams across campus. And so I'm curious as to what types of steps you've taken to sort of bring that home? Or are you content with continuing siloization?
I think you're talking about centralization and decentralization. And I think what we're seeing across.
Well, actually a little bit. Well, actually a little bit more than that because they really are more of a silo as opposed to just decentralized.
Yeah.
I mean, these key comms teams have worked independent with their own agenda, their own sort of messaging, their own, you know, goals and aspirations as a communication team, oftentimes without coordinating with the chancellor or the executive team or anybody else, you know, up the chain, so to speak. And so it's, to me, it seemed, I, I don't know if it continues. It seems to have gotten a little better over the last couple of years, but it seemed to be very, very silo as opposed to just decentralized.
Yeah. Well, we, we did strive to address just that. And in the larger picture, universities tend to, to move back and forth between centralization and decentralization in communications. And the reason why they tend to flip back and forth is there are benefits and losses to each one. So if you centralize, you end up with more of everyone stepping in the same direction and then lockstep, which there's benefits to. But if you, but you also lose some of the, the local organicness of the people serving the different units. And you end up with more of a kind of higher level communication that may not do all the things that are happening now that are quite good in the units. So there's, there's kind of the philosophy of, of back and forth. And then there's also the questions of savings or not savings. Um, the, the needs of communications are rising and rising and rising because the opportunities that I talked about in telling our own story, every leader on campus needs to use those tools to tell their story, to raise money, to share the stories of their faculty. So you end up with a lot of resources in this space. But in terms of coordination, which I'm glad you brought up, that was key in why we did the top messages. We wanted to, everybody was out there telling good stories, but what, what was the overall takeaway that people were getting? And so that's why we wanted to really organize people into those three buckets so that we could have a consistent message. And then in terms of leveling up to the chancellor and so forth, we do have a much more cohesive practice so that we work very closely with the communicators across campus so that people are more consistent in our messaging. And when, when the university speaks out on the topic, it's, it's more often with one voice.
Are, are you able to really, and this goes to Marty's question. I think he sort of hit on this, and that is, you know, it's fine to communicate. We all feel really good about communicating, about how great Carolina is, but what is the purpose? I mean, what's the ROI? What are, what are we doing it for? Other than just saying great things about UNC Chapel Hill, which may be in and of itself our goal. And if that is, I mean, maybe that's, that's a fine policy to have. But, you know, most corporations, for example, if they're communicating, they're communicating for a purpose. And so before they communicate, they know the purpose and they have unexpected ROI as a result of the communication.
Yeah. I think as we launch marketing, we're going to start with data and then we're going to set goals that are based on improving that data. So that, that is where you're going to see that kind of benchmarking. But you're also going to have other ways of measuring it. If we're doing well in sentiment, you'll just notice more often people are starting to talk about the messages that you're putting out there. So some of it is anecdotal information that will come to you. Oh, everyone's feeling better about this aspect of the university. Our message must be getting out there. But we'll also have numbers that will show. In term, I was really pleased to see the chancellor's installation numbers because that tells me thousands of people got that content and it was good stuff. And that's being consumed. So it's not just the 400 people in the room. It's thousands of other people sharing in that important moment for the university and all the, all that was in that event. So I think, you know, again, it's going to be multiple areas of, of, are you getting there or not? But the numbers are going to be plentiful.
Is anyone else have any questions for Cameron?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how many employees in your communications shop?
I have about 44. And that includes visitor center.
Okay.
So that is a pretty lean and mean shop for the industry. And one of the reasons that it's a little smaller than some is that it's missing the marketing component. And it's also missing a, a division that is often in there, which is web communications. That's another area that we might want to think about in the future.
When you say industry, do you mean the 10 peers that we usually refer to as our sort of market comp?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, other, other local universities, we, we are significantly smaller.
Does that 44 include what would be the communications people at, say, the Kenan Flagler Business School?
No.
So, okay.
No, we are the team focused on.
How many communications people would be across the university at large, you think? 44 in your shop that would be like central comms, let's say.
It's in the, the, this sounds like a squishy number because it is somewhat, but it's in the area of 200. And the reason why it's squishy is sometimes you'll have someone who's an executive assistant who might help with social media. So there's a lot of people who do multiple functions.
Thank you.
Marty and then Patrick.
As a follow-up to that, what's the approximate budget of the university marketing? All of the university marketing kind of rolled up, so centralized and the decentralized.
I'll have to get that number for you. I know what my division is, but I don't know if, I think that's a number that I'd have to get back to you with. I don't know the whole university all put together.
Okay. And on your division, it's how much?
It's in the new, between five and six million. And that is 95% personnel costs.
Okay.
When did the visitor center open?
Gosh, I might need Beth's help.
On Franklin Street?
I'm going to ask my senior AVC when the visitor center opened.
Well, you can just throw out a date, a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one on Franklin Street. Yeah. Okay. So over four years. And, and does your shop do the, the UNC college promotional branding for athletics?
No.
Is that a, is that athletic department?
That's athletics. Yeah, we work in concert. We work very closely with all the other teams. I'm in pretty consistent communication with UNC health comms, for example, or athletics. We work really hard to make sure that people are connected and, and know each other and work together when it's, when the work requires it. And to have some consistency in how we're approaching things, but it is separate.
Because those, those ads, you know, every couple of years, they, they have a, a new one and they're, you know, they're seen by everybody who watches a football game or basketball game. And most often they're not even talking about athletics. They're talking about the university. Um, so I was wondering if you helped with those, with the content of those ads?
I'm not as close into what they're putting out. No, it's, it's not an approval where I look at everything that they're putting out.
Trustee Brian has a question.
Is that personnel number you gave, is that the norm? Like 90 to 95% as opposed to spending on digital campaigns? Or is it usually that heavy on personnel?
You know, I, I think it is typical of a university communications team to be mostly personnel. But other universities might have a, a bigger marketing budget. And they might have it because they're doing enrollment budgeting, which I've been in charge of other places. And so I might've had a million dollars to do that. But you'd be surprised at how many big public flagship universities have not bothered with marketing to this point because they haven't needed to. But now the digital environment is demanding that they do. So Harvard didn't have marketing until recently because now they need it and they didn't feel like they needed it before.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, that, that makes, that makes sense. I guess one, maybe one follow-up, and maybe this is just a broader question personally towards the chancellor, but is you work on, I mean, I liked your, your headings, your, the, the attrition of excellence. But, but as you work on strategic plan issues, and I guess this relates to fundraising as well, does, how, how do you integrate all of that? Once, you know, if you roll out a big new AI thing, new fancy telescopes, whatever, how does that work?
It's all connected. That's why we need to have a, a real marketing function. And to Cameron's point, the, the first step is recognizing that you're in a competition, right? For, for students, for federal research funding, for rankings. We've acted for a long time like we're not in a competition. Just, you know, hey, we're great and everyone should know that we're great. And if they don't, that's their problem. And we need a different mindset. And, and the marketing effort is an important part of that. It will bring benefits for, for development and everything else that we're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I, I like that approach. And it's also like, I like the idea of a call to action too. You know, in other words, you have a purpose for a communication piece. And if it's, if the communication is to talk about the great things that Chris Clemens wants to do with a sexy telescope, there should be a donate button at the end of the, at the end of the copy, right?
All right. Does anyone else have any more questions for Cameron? Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. I think that concludes our updates and open session for today. Trustee Valentine, I now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that the External Relations Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, section 143, 318.11a1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information and also pursuant to section 143, 318, 1182.
You've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll go into closed session.
I'm sorry. Well, I haven't been able to see very much. I don't want to be. I'm sorry. I don't know. I can't get this. All right. See him. Actually, that's going to be so. Yeah. Yes. Is that a chance? Okay. Yes. It's all. I hold this. I don't worry. It's worth it. During time. Um, this is right now. I'm. Yeah. Right. Sure. But the same kind of right. Because you know. I'm going to. Yeah, just. I'm. You know. It's. I understand. Yeah. So. Really. Stop. Yeah. Right. I just. This is the first line. Everybody can't do that. Like she. Five. And power. Oh, okay. He said, yeah. He's sorry about that. Yeah. I'm. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November meeting of the University Affairs Committee. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the roll.
Chair Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Lloyd. Mr. Ballantyne. Mr. Bullock.
Here.
Mr. Bryan. Mr. Kalapa. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Turner. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. I would like to deviate from our agenda for a minute and recognize Marty Trustee Cottis.
Thank you. Well, we're honored today to have Congresswoman Virginia Fox in our audience and willing to speak to us. We spent, your ears must be burning because we spent forty-five minutes this morning talking about your great legislation and efforts in the House Education and Workforce Committee where you're chair. She has been a tireless advocate for reforms that would ensure that our education institutions are aligned with the needs of today's job market. She has been the U.S. Representative for North Carolina's Fifth Congressional District since 2005 with advanced degrees in education. Congresswoman Fox has a long and impressive track record. She introduced the College Cost Reduction Act, a conference bill aimed at addressing the rising cost of higher education and holding institutions accountable for the financial outcomes of their students. Moreover, it seeks to ensure that institutions have skin in the game by holding them financially responsible for excessive student debt, a bold step towards real accountability in higher education, while offering incentives for them to be aligned with students' and taxpayers' interests. As Ronald Reagan once remarked, the nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." Yet when it comes to Congresswoman Fox, she truly is. She's helping the workforce by leveraging the vast resources of our universities and community colleges to solve real-world problems and provide transformational education and skills. Her leadership has been pivotal in bridging the gap between education and employment, ensuring that students aren't just earning degrees but are also gaining the skills that will make a difference during their lifetimes. I hope we can all draw inspiration from Congresswoman Fox's leadership and vision. Her dedication to education and the workforce reform is something North Carolina, our country, desperately needs to ensure that our institutions are preparing individuals. Congresswoman Fox, it'd be great if you could give a few remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cottis. I appreciate it. It's nice to be here with all of you all this afternoon. And I will tell you that, growing up, it would never have occurred to me that I'd have an opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees at Carolina. My husband likes to tell the story that the night I met him, I was supposed to be very impressed that I was meeting this Carolina man. I grew up in Avery County in a bit of a sheltered life. I knew about Lee's McCray and I knew about Appalachian State, but I didn't know much beyond that. And so, when I was introduced to him and I was told, and he said he was from, he was going to school at Chapel Hill. I said, "Oh, that's in Raleigh, isn't it?" Well, that almost ended our relationship right there. But I managed to recover from it and we wound up getting married. So I have learned much, much more about Carolina since then and had the great honor to, after marrying Tom, Tom got me to Carolina. He came as a freshman and lived in Old East, in thirty-nine Old East, actually, where Tom Wolfe had lived. And so, he bleeds Carolina blue, let me tell you. And I'm convinced that the sleep tapes that they talk about in Brave New World were what they played in Old East and in the other dorms when Tom was here because of his strong devotion. So I want you to know that we have a Carolina family. And my grandson's name is Keenan. So just establish my bona fides with you right now. My undergraduate degree is in English from Carolina. I was inspired to go to college by a high school student teacher my senior year. I stayed after school, sweeping out to school. I was the high school janitor. And he stayed after school and he told me, he said, "You really need to go to college and marry a man with a college education." I was number three in my high school class but had no idea of going to college. But he changed my plans. So I was inspired to be a high school English teacher. But because I had to work full-time and go to school part-time, I never had a chance to do student teaching. So I got my AB in English at Carolina and then came back and got a Master of Arts in College Teaching. You know, Carolina has always, in the past, stepped up and done things that needed to be done when they needed to be done. And at the time, the community colleges had just begun in North Carolina. And there was a need for people with master's degrees to be able to teach in the community colleges. And so, after getting my undergraduate degree in English and working a couple of years up in the mountains, I was able to come back with a fellowship and an assistantship and get a Master of Arts in College Teaching to fulfill my life's desire to teach. But I got a job, I first taught at a community college and then at Appalachian. I was able to teach at Appalachian. So I will just tell you again that I am just as loyal to Carolina as Tom is. I didn't have the sleep tapes, but I had some other experiences that have made me very, very fond of Carolina. What I've been working on for the past seven years, we originally called the Prosper Act. When we introduced it four, five years ago, it did not pass the House. We worked on it some more and it's now called the College Cost Reduction Act, as Chairman Cottis said. And I believe that when we go back into session, I will be able to get that bill passed because it is going to save $1.8 trillion of taxpayer money if it is instituted. And we will be working on reconciliation, I believe, when we get back into session. So I'm very excited about it. One of the wonderful things is that it does a lot of good and it saves money. And you at Carolina have the opportunity to do a lot of good and make money. If Carolina were to institute the College Cost Reduction Act elements, you would gain, in federal support, $1.8 million. That's the figure Chance gave you, isn't it? So you already are doing a lot of the things that are in the College Cost Reduction Act. When I talked to Chairman Cottis, he mentioned to me that he would like to see Carolina implement a lot of the things we are promoting in the College Cost Reduction Act. But you are doing some, a lot of those things. And what we're hoping is that Carolina will be, again, a role model for the country in implementing the elements of transparency. I gotta look at this, my notes a little bit, transparency, access and affordability, accountability and student success. Now, we know Carolina didn't get to be the number one ranked school in the country by not doing a lot of these things already, but you can do it even more so. What we want is to see good state-level policies and good university policies come out. We want to see a high value for the education that students spend, not just their money on, but their time on. You know, I've always said, if you make a bad investment, you can often make that money back. And a lot of you know more about that than I do. But you can never get your time back that you spent on that bad investment. And so, for those who spend time working on a degree or trying to gain skills, and we hope the two go together. We hope that you're going to get a degree and along with the degree gain skills. Although for many students and many universities, that is no guarantee. You can get a degree and wind up with no skills. But what we're hoping through the CCRA is that those things will go together. So I'm just here to encourage you to continue to do what Chairman Cottis is bringing up to you in his subcommittee and to help push the state of North Carolina along. You are the flagship university and you have the opportunity, again, to be the role model, not just for North Carolina, but really for the country. So we have lots of information on the College Cost Reduction Act or CCRA. And we're happy to share it with you, but you have somebody here who's becoming steeped in it. And I'd like to take him around the country. When we first talked, I told him, I said, "You've just really inspired me and I'd love to take him around and talk to other schools around the country." I had the opportunity to serve with Patrick Ballantyne in the Senate and I know Patrick could do the similar kind of thing. So let me stop there. I'll see if you have any questions. I'm sorry I didn't bring staff along to answer questions. So I might have to write questions down and bring you back answers if I can't answer them all. But I thank you very much for having me here today and look forward to seeing some of you later.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thank you, Congresswoman Fox. And later this evening, you'll be receiving the Davy Award, which is the highest award honored to individuals who graduate and/or contribute to the university and to our world to make it a better place. Can't think of a more deserving person than you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. You're very kind. You're very kind.
Representative Fox, thank you for making the time today to spend with us here. And we look forward to seeing you later on this evening. I'd like to move back to our agenda. And our first item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes of September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the University Affairs Committee meeting. Has anyone had a chance to take a look at those minutes? Any concerns about the minutes? May I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is to review and approve a new policy on academic program review. Gisele Corby, Senior Vice Provost for Faculty Affairs and Keenan Distinguished Professor, is here to present this item. Dr. Corby?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Jones and trustees. This policy is actually not new. It's newly written as a policy, but it actually just codifies the work that we've been doing through our graduate school in terms of academic program review. This is one of several policies that we've been asked to formalize by the System Office. And so, you'll see a couple others coming, as the faculty workload policy was one coming before you. This is another one that's coming before you as well. So this policy outlines the academic program review process for ensuring continuous program improvement at the university, obviously essential for maintaining our high academic standards. This includes and describes what's very clearly articulated on the graduate school website, the frequent self-study within individual programs and periodic review by faculty drawn from peer institutions. This policy describes our commitment to transparency as well as academic excellence as well. And I'll draw your attention to notably that this policy describes not only the review but also articulates in detail the opportunity to shrink, expand or close programs as well. And that's in addition to what had been on the website. The policy and regulations ask for several new metrics in addition to what we've already been collecting. And their team at the graduate school is working on developing those metrics with our Office of Institutional Research. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you for being here and for presenting that information. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Corby? Seeing none, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve this new, this policy? Have a second? Have a second? Any discussion or debate? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item of business is to review and approve the revised policy on EHRA Employee Non-Salary and Deferred Compensation. Vice Chancellor Becky Manguini is here to present this item. Dr. Manguini?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item I have before you today is, I think, a straightforward edit to the university's non-salary and deferred compensation policy. And this policy articulates the full details of the bonus program that this body approved back in 2022. Currently, the policy states that any one employee may receive only one retention bonus in a two-year period. And that if the employee leaves the university within twelve months of receiving the bonus, they have to pay it back either in part or in full, depending on when they leave. And the bonuses cannot exceed $25,000 or 20% of the employee's salary. So those are the provisions we agreed upon when we put the policy in play back in 2022. The program has been largely very successful. But because retention bonuses can be used both to preemptively retain an employee and to aid in the retention of an individual or group of employees who are working on the successful completion of a project, there have been a few instances where a little bit more flexibility could be useful. That's a lot of words. Let me explain that in very, like, an example. So say I'm a dean and I have a faculty member and a staff member. I need to work on a project to roll out a new curricular program. I may say, "I need this done by the end of the year and I want to make sure these employees stay in that role to do that." I may give them a retention bonus of $1,000 or $2,000 to complete that work. Once I've done that, however, I've used my one-time option for a retention bonus. And say I get to eighteen months into that two-year period and employee number one comes to me and says, "I have an outside offer." In that case, I no longer have a retention bonus option as a tool in my toolbox. And I am stuck either having to make a base adjustment, which, as we know, is recurring dollars, or I have to come up with another plan to retain that employee. The proposal that we're making actually does not change the spirit of the plan. What it would say is, in that instance, it has to be at least twelve months after the first bonus was provided, that dean would have the opportunity to provide a second retention bonus only if the employee in question has an outside offer, a written offer, that either the chancellor or I, as his delegated authority, approve it and you can show me business need for why that employee needs to stay in the role. And most importantly, that any second bonus does not exceed that initial threshold of 20% of the salary or $25,000. So we're not changing the rules. We're just saying, in this case, you could give the bonuses out over two different cycles within that period. Payback requirements, all the other details remain exactly the same. If I were in your shoes, I would ask you, how many people have received these bonuses and why is this important? For EHRA employees, in the 2024 year, we did twenty-five of them. The EHRA employees are largely, generally make more dollars. For SHRA employees, we've been able to do 962 retention bonuses. And sometimes, I think that's a really important indicator of the importance we've put on retaining some of our lower-paid employees. The number of cases where this type of example has shown up is probably at most two dozen. But when it happens, it happens to the employees that our deans and our leaders and our vice chancellors want to keep the most. And we want to ensure that they have the most tools in their toolbox in the spirit of the existing policy to be able to retain those employees. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I would hope that we can gain your approval on this.
Thank you. Trustee Bullock?
Yeah, so thank you, Vice Chancellor Manguini. As you are aware, I'm suspicious of these types of arrangements. Primarily because, I mean, how do we know, first of all, that these job offers are in fact real? And that it's not sort of one of these, you know, "Hey, I've got a great bonus plan here at Carolina. You've got a great bonus plan at University of Missouri. Let's each write our letters and we'll get a pay raise." And second of all, you know, what's the balance between saying, "Congratulations on your new offer," you know, "Good luck with the new career path"? Because, you know, we take it as a compliment that you're being recruited away because we've probably got several people that can fill your spot and we wish you well and hope you'll always consider yourself a Tar Heel. So could you sort of?
Happy to answer that question. I appreciate you raising it. I think it's fair to say that I see most of these. They come across my desk. The total numbers actually are less than 1%, or, sorry, just under 3% of our total employee base. So the number of people who are getting retention increases either for, and remember, they're not all for when somebody's leaving somewhere. They are also when we say, "I want to make sure Dave Bullock stays in this job for at least two years to finish this major project we're working on." So they work both ways. I cannot give you all 3% are recruiting offers from Virginia or Duke or somewhere else. I will tell you, however, every time one comes across, we have a conversation saying, "What is the business need for retaining this person? And is this going to be an ongoing retention matter?" There are some employees who are, there is a great promise and they can continue to deliver. There are others who have hit really, they may want a promotion to another role. What we need is this role. What they want is the next role up. Unfortunately, our structure doesn't, we can't promote everybody into another higher role. So we have to have a conversation. You've hit the threshold. You're at the max of the salary range. There's no more money to give. There's no more elevated position. And in those cases, many leaders have to make the decision to say, "Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to retain you." We do have retention paperwork requirements. So there are, when there is an active offer, we have to show demonstration either of being a finalist or of an active offer. And what we can provide in both of those instances looks different. Whether, I've never heard of someone saying, "Oh, I've got a bonus program at Missouri and we're going to work out a deal."
You wouldn't hear it.
I might not hear, but I do read a lot of these. Totally fair.
I was being a little facetious with that, but I mean, I guess the point is that it's-
You have a right to hold us accountable. And I think our shop is looking at these numbers and saying, "If we're looking at 3% or under, we're not actually out there providing bonuses just for the sake of bonuses. We're doing a good job of being systematic and ensuring that we have safeguards to ensure that we're being good stewards of state resources."
Trustee Ballantyne?
Thank you. I was wondering, and you answered it and said about 3% utilization. Do we, do we have a budget that would be able to pay for $25,000 bonuses if 97% used it?
Most of those bonuses are not $25,000.
I understand that, but I mean, if that's the policy.
The unit, the unit making the request has to be able to have the budget to support it. Often that comes from either lapped salaries from vacant positions or there are other resources. But no, we don't have the resources, nor would it be- But no, we don't have the resources, nor would it be a good practice to start making $25,000.
Well, I'd like to move, I'd like to move to approve that. I think it's important to give the faculty that kind of flexibility and discretion. And I think bonus bonuses are the way to go. And I think, I just think that's good business practice for any manager to take care of their people.
I will pocket that motion, but I do want to make sure that there are no other questions before we proceed. Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. May I get a second? All those and any further discussion? I'm at, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
One opposed? Yeah, I oppose. I believe that the ayes do carry. And the motion carries, so we will place these two items on the consent agenda for the full board's approval tomorrow.
Thank you very much. I appreciate consideration.
That concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, move that the University Affairs Committee go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143, 318, Point 11A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143, 318, 11A3, A5, and A6.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, but I have a second. Discussion, debate. Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. We are in open session. If there are no other items for the committee for our consideration, we'll adjourn without objection. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November meeting of the Committee on Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict of interest or appearance of a conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Hearing no, no one with a conflict, I would ask Chris McClure, please call the roll.
Chair Bullock?
Present.
Vice Chair Cottis? Mr. Blaine? Mr. Brenner? Dr. Jones? Mr. Meekins? Mr. Patel? Mr. Pryor? Mr. Turner? Mrs. White? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. And before I jump into the agenda, I do, I do want to say that serving on this Board of Trustees has been the professional honor of my life to this point. And I really appreciate not only the members of the Board and past members of the Board, the current chancellor, past chancellor, and the staff, faculty as well, and everyone here in this room who I've been able to deal with. We appreciate all the work that we've been able to accomplish and the friendships that we've made. I'm very excited to move on to a different sort of adventure in my life. And we'll obviously miss being here at these meetings and, but will always be a tarheel. I want to, want to just point out a couple of things, you know, some of the things that this board has really done. We've made great strides. It began, it began at an orientation session where John Pryor and I were informed that the university budget was run by 16 separate budgets. Remember that, Vice Chancellor Knufman? And, and, and the budget reform that this board undertook along with the administration at the time, uncovered as a result of that reform, a $100 million structural deficit to the university's finances that we were able with, with leadership and hard work to clear up in about 13 or 14 months. And now with the leadership of the current administration and Vice Chancellor Knufman, we're running a zero-based budget. In fact, a slight surplus continues today because of that. And I know it's kind of nerdy to say this, but you know, we were also noted in standard and pores with the rating agencies for the budget reform that we accomplished at this university. And that budget model was then adopted by all other university system schools. This board and members of this board helped to usher in the school of civic life and leadership, a school that is becoming a model across the country to teach our, our, our rising citizens and leaders of the future how to engage in civil discourse and about how fantastic and wonderful this country that we live in is. Dr. Perrin Jones, leadership on freedom of speech and intellectual integrity at this university is probably one of the shining examples of board leadership here. The Calvin principles of institutional neutrality. While they were at first seemed to be, you know, a little bit like, why would we want to do that? You know, certainly after what has occurred with university presidents at Ivy League schools recently. I think we're glad that we instituted those institutional neutrality principles. And it's become something that has really helped this university move forward. We established the Audit Risk, Audit and Risk Management Committee that trustee Cottis first chaired. Thank you for that. Did a fantastic job to illustrate the need for audits and, and work on risk management here at the university. And this board has consistently, sometimes, sometimes it's called spark, caused sparks, and that's okay. But we brought, I believe, a perspective from the people of North Carolina. A, a natural, there's a natural tension and a push and pull. Clearly, sometimes with faculty and staff, when you bring that perspective. But ultimately, this university is owned by the people of North Carolina. And they look to this university not only as an economic engine to provide economic support and development for the state of North Carolina, but as a place of discovery, a place to make North Carolina and the world a better place, and to educate citizens on how to serve and do what is right on behalf of their fellow mankind, men and women. Mankind meaning men and women, of course. So I'm very proud to be associated with this university, proud graduate, and proud to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees. So I appreciate Board members allowing me that opportunity to just say thank you. Okay, our first item of business is to review and approve the open session minutes of the September 18th, 2024 meeting. Everybody's had that in their packet. Do I have a motion to approve? Have a motion from Chair Pryor and a second from Trustee White. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, opposed.
Thank you. Next item of business this afternoon is to accept the transfer of the distribution from the endowment to the university for expenditure during the 2024-2025 fiscal year. This proposed transfer has already been approved by the Board of Trustees of the Endowment Fund. It is now ready for our approval. Vice Chancellor Knufman is here to present that item, Vice Chancellor Knufman.
Thank you, Chair. Each year at this time, we ask the Board of Trustees to accept the transfer of the endowment distribution to the university per Board of Governor requirements. Just to note, this, this distribution was approved by the Endowment Board at its most recent meeting. You can find additional details on the university uses in your materials. When you look at those, you'll see the vast majority of the funds are restricted and support professorships and scholarships. The unrestricted funds comprise a small amount of the funds transferred. And we've provided a five-year history of the allocation in your materials. All categories of the expenditure of the unrestricted have remained relatively unchanged over the five years with the challenge, with the chancellor's fund allocation growing modestly over that time. I do want to also note, just the Board of Trustees has expressed strong interest in, in public safety and making sure that's fully funded and prioritized. And when we're thinking about that during our budget process, we'll certainly be looking at the adequacy of that budget. And one of those sources that we look at and think about being able to use being able to use are those discretionary or those chancellor funds as a potential funding source. And I just want to note that in this piece. How about you address any questions?
Any questions, Trustee Cottis or Vice Chair Cottis?
Vice Chancellor Knufman, thank you for mentioning the campus safety. I mean, it was clearly important to this board in May, and we allocated 2.3 million towards campus safety. Part of that is to deal with a previous chancellor, Chancellor Fault, that reallocated funds from the Chancellor's fund that was supposed to be spent on cameras and spent it on other items. That was a, something that came up in one of the audits. So I do think it's important that the will of this board to ensure campus safety is fully funded is reflected. I appreciate you saying that. It would be nice to see some numbers attached to that and dig into that as well as the camera funding that we've talked about, the four million dollar ask and the outside funding of that as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cottis. Any additional questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed transfer? I have a motion from Trustee Patel. Do I have a second? I have a second from Trustee Briner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is a request to approve the fiscal year 2024 Endowment Fund Annual Report. Welcome to the mic, the esteemed Mr. John King.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. I'll be brief.
Thank you.
This is, I just, I just put some excerpts from the University of North Carolina System Policy Manual and Code to remind us why we're have to approve this particular item. But it basically states that the trustees at each institution should establish and maintain an endowment fund. It then goes on to describe how the Endowment Fund Board should be comprised. And obviously, our board is, is in compliance with that. And then finally, it goes on to say that the Board of Trustees and the Endowment Fund shall annually submit a comprehensive report on the Endowment Fund through the Board of Trustees to the Board of Governors. And that's what we're putting forth today is, is that annual report. So just as a quick reminder, this is a slide I went through at my presentation back in September, but the report refers to the box I've highlighted in orange here. It's just, it's just referring the UNC Chapel Hill Statutory Endowment Fund. It does not include all the other entities that invest in the Chapel Hill Investment Fund. So it's, it's just specific to this. And then finally, this slide sort of highlights the, takes the key points of the report that we, we kind of put in, in more verbiage. But the, the Endowment Fund, the Statutory Endowment Fund started the year at a little over 2.2 billion. We generated investment gains of 281 million. That was the 12.6% return. There were 51.8 million of new dollars that were added to the fund through contributions. And then 126 million was distributed for program support. It's what you just approved. A good chunk of it is what you just improved in the, in the endowment distribution. So the, so the market value closed at $2.4 billion. So it was a $207 million increase during the year. So with that, the, the actual report is, I believe, in your materials. It was approved by the Endowment Fund Board of Trustees at its October 18th meeting, and they recommend approval of this and forwarding it to the Board of Governors.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any questions or discussion? I'll, I'll say it's an honor also to serve with you for the last, my little bit more than three years is on the Chapel Hill Investment Fund, Endowment Foundation Boards. Got a really professional group and do a really, really, really professional, competent, exceptional job investing the money for the university. It's an honor, honor to work with you.
Appreciate the support of your, you and the others on this board that have served on our boards.
You, you're not going to have me to kick around anymore, John. You won't have me asking all those questions about investments stuff. No, you're, you're really, you guys are great. But are any other discussions, all those? And do I hear a motion to accept it? All right, I have a motion and I have a second from, a motion from Chair Pryor and a second from Trustee Briner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank, thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
All right. Next item of business is to review a proposed designer selection for the Columbia Street Steam Tunnel replacement.
Yes.
It's exciting stuff. Thank you.
I know.
Associate Vice Chancellor Halsey is here to present the item. Vice Chancellor Halsey, thank, thank you for being here.
Since steam tunnels are not necessarily super exciting, I thought before I asked for approvals, I would run through a couple of projects, just to give you an idea, we are, what's some of our major construction projects. The first one is the Steven Bell Hall Kenan Flagler Business School Edition. If you haven't been by there lately, it's, it's doing really well. It's on schedule. I just walked it a couple of weeks ago, and it's at a great point to tour because the interior walls haven't gone in. So you can really see how vast that addition is going to be. Last week, we hit a major milestone in that the large overhead crane was removed. So that means that the building is basically buttoned up. And if we get bad weather over the winter, we can still continue to keep, to stay on schedule. So assuming we keep that schedule, it'll be ready in early 2026. And if, again, if anyone would like to go tour on any of these projects, I'm happy to take you guys around. It, it's nice to see the, all the work, the hard work that you've put in, kind of come into fruition. One that I would not recommend touring just right now, because we're in the middle of the demolition phase, is Harrington Hall. But that's good news. We're, we're almost done with demo, and we should be starting the construction phase in January. And then that, that project will wrap up in time, in fall of 2026, to welcome some new students to the nursing school. So that's a good project. And then this last one I wanted to review for you real quick was Avery Residence Hall. So this type of project probably makes me the most nervous because while we like to keep all projects on schedule, if we fall behind on a housing project, it obviously has real implications for our friends in housing. So we're on schedule. This project is going to address some longstanding HVAC issues. And I think the students will really appreciate the new air conditioning improvements, the new windows, and the improved accessibility, which we're getting with some elevator work. And so I kind of want to show this one because as we develop this housing master plan, there's going to be a lot of this type of work that we need to get done in the future years. Any questions on those? Same size. Yeah, it's not adding any rooms. In fact, you might lose some stuff because we're making some of them ADA accessible.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, thanks.
All right. So now the real business. This is the two approvals. We're asking for approval to move forward with the Mid-Atlantic infrastructure firm out of Winston-Salem as the design-build contractor for the steam tunnel repairs. Just of note, we did have robust initial interest in this procurement. And we had seven firms that came to the pre-bid discussions. We had them actually from all over, local and in some national firms. But despite this interest, we only got one company submitted in response to the original RFQ based on System Office Guidance. We did do that bid again, and again, we only had the one company. I don't have too many concerns about bringing them on board, though they were the ones that did our last steam tunnel project. So they're very versed in this type of work. I will say that we did have our project manager follow up with some of those companies, sort of informally, on why they didn't bid. We got a myriad of answers in that they said that finding subs at this point has really been a, a challenge for some of these larger contractors. And they also just said their schedules didn't match up with this type of work. But based on the fact that we went from seven to one, I am going to work with procurement to follow up formally with those companies and see if I can make sure that we're doing, that our processes that we have for bidding are not causing people to not want to work with us. Any questions on this one?
I've got a, I'm just curious.
Trustee Jones.
Where, where is that going to be on Columbia Street?
It's, um, the, you mean, where's the actual steam tunnel? It's on Columbia and South. It's a, it's a section there by South. And that's actually why the cost per linear foot is a little bit higher because the logistics of doing the work, we're going to have to build a pedestrian bridge, and it's a lot harder to do the work where this particular section of tunnel is. Okay.
All right. Any, any additional questions? Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Vice Chair Cottis. Do I have a second? I have a second from Trustee Patel. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, great. That is approved.
All right. And my last item of business, while steam tunnel work is crucial, it's not near as interesting to most of the campuses as this other project, which is going to be at the pit. We're requesting an increase in the planning authority so that we can continue design efforts. I'm not ready to request the full construction authority as we're still finalizing the funding sources, which is unique for this project in that we anticipate using utility funds to do some of the stormwater work, open space funds, which are funds that we use to do exactly this type of work, which is landscape improvements. And then we're also working with the University Development Office on gauging donor interest to this type of work. We feel like this type of project would be, would work well with that, those, those donors. The basic objective of the project is to fix the broken stormwater conveyance, but the scope also requires taking down the two oak trees that are in that area, which I know is sensitive. And when we do that, we're going to have to repave that whole area, which, and so we brought in consultants to consider solutions that address the deficiencies in accessibility, circulation, and then the social, social gathering spaces. Our landscape architect has done a lot of focus groups with the students, and this is being well received. So the increased authority will allow us to continue to design, and then we should be able to come to you with the final design and a full funding authorization.
So is this an additional 200,000 for planning to take it to 350,000?
Correct.
And, and why the additional money? I mean, it seems like, I mean, it's, 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 it's a, it's a pit.
That, it, so the estimate right now for the, the work is closer to $3 million to do, about a million of that would be under. And then it's, it's, it's actually not just the pit. It's, it's kind of the surrounding areas going out towards the Union and back towards Lenore Hall. So that doesn't necessarily mean we will spend all that on design, but we'd like the authority to be able to, to keep those, that consultant work ongoing so that we have a good product to get some donor, potential donor funds.
Any additional questions? By the way, I don't have any problem cutting those trees.
It, it's actually been, well, people, I think, are ready for a little bit of a change.
Right, yeah. I think it could use a little, a little, little dress up there. Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Chair Pryor to approve. Do I have a second? I have a second from Trustee Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to coming back and visiting the pit when it's all done. It ought to be really nice. Yeah, yeah. Our next item of business is to consider a disposition by easement request to grant an easement to the Orange Water and Sewer Authority. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion to table this item. Do I have a motion to table the item? I have a motion from Chair Pryor to table this item. Do I, and I have a second from Trustee Ballantyne. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. All right, we'll table that item, and it'll be put on a future agenda. The last item of business is to approve a request for proposed annual 2025 tuition and fees schedule. Trustee Knufman.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. Here to present and ask for approval of our recommended tuition and fee changes for fiscal year 26. We'll have, in this discussion, we'll cover student fee adjustments, tuition adjustments, both at the undergraduate non-resident level, and then some school-based tuition increases at the graduate level. We will also cover housing and dining rates. So quickly, on the process, where we are at, we are in that dark green top box there in November, where we're in front of the Board of Trustees asking for approval of tuition and fee recommendations. I do want to highlight in that light green, just the, all the work that happens on the campus for the Tuition Fee Advisory Task Force. Just a big thank you to students, staff across the university, and, and Trustee Pryor for just the involvement and engagement through that process. After, I should note, after this approval here, it will get submitted to the System Office for review, and then the Board of Governors will take action typically in the February, March timeframe. So an important part of the process is guidance issued by the System Office each year. They issued guidance, really two, two big areas on fees and tuition on fees. Of course, we have some, some important considerations. There's a 3% statutory cap on mandatory fees. When we talk about mandatory fees, there are six: student activity fee, debt service, education and technology, campus health, athletics and security. Those are the areas. And we'll talk more about fees in a minute. On tuition, this will be the eighth year in a row where we will remain unchanged for North Carolina undergraduate residents. Again, an incredible commitment to affordability in the state. We will talk some more about our, our proposal on the undergraduate non-resident and, and on the graduate. So turning to fees, first on the miscellaneous, we've got a couple categories of, of fee changes. For you, first, there's some miscellaneous charges to, to note. Rounding, the System Office actually rounded all of their mandatory fees as part of a process last year to the nearest dollar. So we're just recommending to do that, to, to follow suit. So there's some small changes there. With respect to student transit, this is, and this is, student transit fees are mandatory fees paid by all students. They were, the Board of Trustees already approved the, the fee increase in the tuition or the transportation and parking five-year plan earlier this year. So this is just really codifying that in our recommendations we make to the System Office. So those are the miscellaneous charges. In that, in the next column over the technical adjustments, first, the application fees, we're just establishing appropriate application fees for new programs. So this is just hitting the new programs and establishing an application fee for those. The self-fee is the student endowed library fund fee, and that supports specialized equipment and supplies and subscriptions and study space improvements. And what we're doing there is really, it's a change to no longer exclude health affairs and law students from paying this fee. It's a $5 fee. So it's really no change to the fee, just how it's applied. So that's the technical adjustments. The area that deserves more attention and, and more substantive is the mandatory fees and it really on the, the debt service. And then we're also going to talk through a rate reduction. So again, the debt service being one of those six categories of mandatory fees. So talking about mandatory fees, I think it's important to know where do we look? So when you look at Carolina and you look at us on the bottom blue line, you'll see that we are significantly below the UNC system average, much closer to the 2,800 level. And you can see us at a much lower level, closer to below 1,800. And so quite a bit of room between the two. The next closest in the system is NC State in that red line. And again, I just think that's important context as we think about a plan or what we might do on, on mandatory fees and what that might look like. You'll remember last, when we last got together, we talked through two big substantive changes. One on non-resident tuition, which we'll, we'll talk about in a minute, and then the other being a strategy where we increase the debt service fee over four years to help support a new campus rec facility. But I want to talk a little bit about the campus rec facility and the need. First, you know, we had a physical master plan and working group that looked at this among a couple of other topics like housing and some other areas. And I just note, Trustee Briner, Trustee Bullock, Trustee Lloyd, their participation in that. But this area and this need for a campus rec and wellness center kind of rose to the top through that process. When you look at our, the data behind this, our square footage lags behind others. Students are not satisfied. Facilities are outdated and overcrowded. We all had a tour. It was very compelling. I think that, that we're, we're really in a position where we're, we're not competitive at this point. So that was really the need to, to take action. Why is it a debt service fee? That's how every system school has were recently. And you see pictures of the last three that have gone up there at UNC Charlotte, Greensboro, and NC State, all funded with debt service fee. So what you have in front of you is really a, a debt service fee, the 3%, what we're allowed to do under statute over the next four years. It would total $217 over those four years. Even with that increase, I, I want to note and keep in mind those, those lines when we saw those earlier with that. With that 217, we'd still be significantly below the rest of the system. You can see the schedule on what we're contemplating there in terms of the, the years over the next four years. And so one other note, when we're thinking about overall dollars we're trying to raise for this project, this will be the bulk of it would be in debt service. But we also believe there are some reserves and there are some, there is some donor opportunity here too, to add to the project to be able to scope it appropriately. But I also want to note, when we last talked about this, our, our previous board meeting, Trustee Blaine raised the question, is it possible for the university to do an assessment of our current fees? And is there an opportunity to reallocate within those fees to help support this campus priority? And so we, we did that. We looked at our existing stock of fees. The area that, that came into most focus, which education and technology fees. And we had a conversation with the College Arts and Sciences about that fee. Well, why did we talk about that fee? Well, it's the highest mandatory fee, number one. And number two, it's also a fee where there are other fund sources. It's not just, campus health is primarily supported by campus health fees. Other, other types of those fees, that's the primary funding source with, with education and technology. It's just one funding type. So we had a conversation with College Arts and Sciences and they were able to absorb this and really reallocate these dollars toward the, this campus priority. And I think, I just want to draw a lot of, some credit toward the College Arts and Sciences and recognize the, just, I think they deserve some credit for putting the university priority first. I, that's pretty unprecedented, at least in, in my tenure through, through watching fee changes at the, at the system level over, over the last several years. It also, I do think it's important to note, that allows us to reduce the total incremental cost to students over the four years, yet still get the same amount of debt service we were talking about needing. So again, a really good outcome. So that's on the fee side. Switching over to tuition, some, some more line charts. So you can see our Carolina on the, on the bottom there in our, in the blue. You can see the, the path we have been on really had been more in the, the 0% to 2% range for several years. In the last two years, 24 and 25, we increased closer to 5%. That was an idea that we were trying to catch up to our peers. You can see when we compare to the peer average in green, we started to close that gap, but we really weren't making much progress. That's only, that's only, that's all of our peers. When you really look at the peers we're most closely tracked against, which is the top five publics, including UVA, Michigan, UCLA, Berkeley, where even with that 5% increases, we're not gaining on them at all. So we started to look through a couple of different scenarios or approaches to be a little bit more aggressive on, on what that might look like. You can see one scenario where we kept on that same path of, of just at 5%. We would not close the gap with the top five publics. We might get to the peer average, but it would take some time. A more aggressive strategy to try to get to the top five publics might contemplate something as extreme as 15% over a couple of years. We landed and we're recommending a 10% increase, the middle dotted line, this current year, followed by 7% over the next several years. And really, I'd like, I'd like the board to think about this as almost really a, a, endorse a multi-year strategy here where, of course, we'll check in each year about what's, about the individual year. But the default would be that we'd be on this kind of plan moving forward. To put that into dollars, you can see here on this chart, for, for residents, of course, they're really largely untouched. It goes up 1%. Why? Because the three, this is tuition and fees. So there's 3% increase on the fee side. On the non-resident, that corresponds, that, that increase we just talked about corresponds to about a 9.75% increase. So that's, it's, it's, could be something to cheer about. The, if, as we move to graduate students, that, so that's undergrad side. On, on the graduate side, one, we're, we're recommending on the campus-based tuition, kind of the, remember when we talk about graduate tuition, there's a base, campus-based tuition that are school-based tuition, the increases that go on top. So we're recommending to maintain the current base tuition rate for all graduate students. And then we're, we're recommending some implementation of market-specific increases for, for several different, several different programs. And we'll talk through those in a minute. First, just, it's worth just comparing and looking at where our tuition and fee rates compared to our peers. You can see on the left, the undergrad side, and then on the, the right-hand side, on the graduate side. So on the undergraduate side, you can see again where our increase puts us on the non-residents at the undergrad side relative to, to peers. And, and again, I think one thing to note about this, this is our, this would be our proposed 25, 26 rates against unchanged 24, 25 numbers for our peers. So I think that's a little bit distorted there. Same comparison on the graduate side. So when we look at the, the school-based proposals, we saw increases from six different schools, Kenan Flagler School of Information and Library Science, our law school, Adam School of Dentistry Medicine and Gillings School of Public Health. And the, each of those schools proposed increases, we'll talk through those. But we want to also note just how our process works. Those are proposed to us. Our Tuition Fee Advisory Task Force reviews all of those. At times, we'll even invite groups in to, to talk through details on each piece. We look at the, the specific needs in the school. What is the value to the student? The, the, the rates and how they compare to peers and competition. And then we also are mindful of ensuring the residents and non-residents have a, have a meaningful difference. On that point about the meaningful difference, I do want to note this. When you see the school-based tuition increase changes, at times there may, may be a flat dollar amount, but the percent might look like it's much, much higher on the residents versus non-residents. That's again, we're only talking about the school-based tuition piece, which would be in this chart, you could see it being really the green. There's still a differential, even if, even if it looks like that, that isn't being differentiated on that school-based tuition increase. Because they're starting from a place where on the campus-based tuition, there's a big difference, there's still that differential there. So looking at first, first set of school-based tuition increase changes, you see the 3% proposed increase for our, the Kennedy Flagler Business School, the MBA program. This is really to support program and faculty support and some redesign initiatives. This is a, really a top 20 MBA program aspiring to be a top 10 ranking. And a lot of the data supports just the return on investment there. They're also establishing a new one-year program, a master in management. And that's really to get, it uses our instruction, professional staff and student programming. And the market comparisons appropriate there are Duke, Wake Forest and UVA. We looked at in terms of setting those rates. Looking at the next set of, of, of increases, the School of Information and Library Science, but the MSIS and the MSLS, 9.4% increase and a 4.2% increase. So 1,040 for each. Again, supporting curriculum enhancements. And that differential is still there, even though the same dollar amount is there. On the law school. Wait, is it, there we are. I went too fast. On the law school, you'll see 6.6% proposed increase. I, I think it's important to note, even after that increase, the law school maintains one of the lowest three in-state tuition charges among the top 50 law schools in the country. And they are in the bottom third of 39 highly-ranked law schools for average tenure professional pay. So that's, that's part of the motivation there. Adam School of Dentistry is next. You can see the increase of $5,000 for residents and $10,000 for non-residents for faculty and staff compensation. Again, when our review saw that the rates bring us closer to median peer rates for that group. I skipped past the School of Medicine, the MS, Cell Biology and Physiology. This is a new program being established. So they're establishing a school-based tuition after the program redesign. It's just a one-year program. They're establishing those rates. And, and finally, on the School of Public Health, we have a series of increases there. You'll see a $2,000 across the board increase for both the doctorate in, in public health and then the MHA, MPH and MSPH and then MSEE programs. And this is the top public school of public health in the nation. This was really supporting some of the excellence at that school. So that's a series of school-based tuition increases. And so I, we've covered really the, the tuition side, the fee increases. And so the next step here is really action by the board and then we'll be submitting these to the Board of Governors. That, that's that section. This, the Board of Trustees also approves both housing and dining rates. I'm going to turn to just the, the housing. And you, you'll, you all will remember, this was a new addition to the responsibility of the Board of Trustees several years ago from the Board of Governors to, to look at housing and dining. Here with housing, you'll see the, the recent history here. It's really been in the 2% range from 1819 through 22, 23. And then slightly higher increases there in the last two years, really trying to catch up, build back some reserves after the impact from the pandemic and get back on stronger fiscal position. Also, some maintenance projects have been, have been just put off. So what are we considering when we're thinking about addressing our housing rates? I, I think, one, again, I want to note, the Physical Master Plan Working Group looked at this, this area and this topic and, and recognized the need to, to really price accordingly and more competitively to shore up just the fiscal position of, of housing as we start to think about the needs of a growing campus moving forward. We also, of course, when we're thinking about the needs driving, we've got this current backlog of deferred maintenance. Some of the major projects, you heard from, from Wendy Halsey just earlier about the Avery renovation, but some big projects currently underway. And then we've got some more on the horizon. Also, you know, I mentioned this, the campus is really entering a growth phase. It's going to put some pressure on the housing side and we need to shore up the finances there to be ready for that. Brailsford and Dunleavy is working on a, a master plan in this area. It's not finalized yet, but it is far enough along to inform the rates that you see in front of you. And then lastly, of course, we're trying to think about just the cost pressures that, that we're facing and making sure that we're, that our rates allow us to cover those. So what did we look at? We looked at a series of rates, a little bit more aggressive than where we have been the last two years. Looked at 6%, 7% and 8%. You can see those and how it affects the different room types there. We ultimately landed on a 7% increase in residence halls and at Ram Village and an 8% increase at Beatty Hill. You can see for residence halls where that, that corresponds to about a $58 to $71 per month increase. You know, in the graduate student housing, that's more in the range of 57 to 112, depending on the type of housing per month. And when we're thinking about that and landing on that recommendation, again, looking at that six, seven and eight, you can kind of see, I, I like this chart because it just outlines the, the amount or the major considerations there. And I think at the 7% range, you'll see we're, we're covering most of the, the known operating costs. It allows us to, to really make some progress on deferred maintenance projects and start to solidify that financial position. So we're able to, to really execute on the master plan moving forward. So those are the housing recommendations. Switching over to dining. Looking at the historical rates, again, pre-COVID, similar, similar kind of increases. We, we typically were in the 2% to 3% range. We've increased a little bit more in the last three years. Really, that's a reflection of the inflation and the costs associated with food away from home. That's the major driver we typically look at when we're, when we're setting those prices. As I mentioned, that food away from home is usually the main, main driver. We're the, the, for August 2024, corresponded to 4%. And we, we typically try to price in, in that range. When we're thinking about what those rates are going to cover, of course, deferred maintenance plays a role. We have some needs on the near-term horizon that we've noted there. And so ultimately, we landed on a 5% recommended increase. Again, that should cover all our, our known operating costs. And then it allows us to, to make a little bit of a, a impact on deferred maintenance kind of moving forward. And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to address any questions. I know we've covered a lot of ground.
So one thing, just quick, I did notice, I'm glad that members of this board and the previous board didn't approve that whole redesign around Lenore. Remember with the old outside dining? Because that would have really conflicted with the, with the work we're doing on the pit. So when I was thinking about the Lenore roof, made me think, there's, there's a decision the board was right about, right? And then not move forward with that one. So, so thanks for that. Bye, Chair Cottis.
Thanks, Nate. We, we went through a couple of other items on the phone previously. And you covered a lot of them out there. But the per square foot analysis for the apartments so that we can kind of benchmark against market rates. I don't know if you had a chance to get into that. And then also on the meal plans, we talked about how if that's, for simplicity, $100 meal plan and you're increasing it 4%, you're requiring them to spend $104. But then what I was asking is what does that relate to in terms of what they're being charged or what they're getting for that? And then we also talked about how that might work along with Trustee Taylor's concept of Meal Swipe Donation Plan. So would you mind chatting about those?
Sure. So I'll start with the comparison on the housing side. Just where, where do our housing rates compare to the market? I, I have a chart, I did not integrate it into the materials. I'd be happy to share it with everyone. It's something we looked at during our Physical Master Plan Working Group, where we looked at where we're priced relative to similar type of housing. You, you can, it's, it's not going to do, but you can see generally, we are very much on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of where we're priced currently. For example, we are in the $9,000 range for a single versus an off-campus 12. And part of the reason is 12 months for off-campus versus ours being nine or 10 months. And so you can see that, that we're at 9,000. The average off-campus is more in the 18,565. So again, a big, big delta between the two. That's one type of housing. There's some others where if you compare one bed, one bath, two bed, one bath. And I've got some of this data I'd be happy to share. But the, the, the bottom line is it's, there's, there's quite a gap. We take that into consideration when we're thinking about where to price. And also Brailsford and Dunleavy is looking at this. That's where that's, where this, where these rates are coming from in this recommendation about how much of that, how much room there is and on what pace we should be, we should be increasing those prices to get, to kind of be able to fund what we're trying to do on the, on that master plan.
And I think, you know, where I was coming from on that is for the undergrad, where we require them to be on campus, that's one thing. For the graduate programs, if there's more flexibility to come closer to market, that could fund more of our facility cost, at least on a per-month basis, if we're not charging them for the two months. I know that's a 10-month versus a 12-month and the undergrad is a nine-month versus a 12-month.
Correct, correct. And even, I think in our rates, we had a little bit higher rate. The 8% was applying to the graduate side as well versus the seven. So I think with that in mind.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's even more room to go up on that, kind of differentiating to help the undergrads keep their costs lower. And again, graduate school's an additional investment, but it's a choice as well at that point.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to share some more of this data, just looking at where they were recommending in the basis. I, I think they were, again, trying to, trying to find that, that I, I think it's likely not going to be solved in one year. I think you're likely to see a series of these. And the, the idea being that we are generating enough revenue there to, to kind of support that plan moving forward. I do think, to your point, I think there is more, a little bit more room on the graduate side potentially. But we're also going to be looking at other options on graduate student housing moving forward here.
Yeah, and we can look at that over next year, not necessarily for this time.
Yep.
And then on the meal plan.
On the meal plan, yes. And, and so the mechanics on how the 5%, the 5% increase works, we really have, you know, you think about our, our meal plan, we have really a, a certain number of, of meals allowed, right? There's, it ranges from unlimited to almost blocks where you have a certain amount of, of meals with some flexible dollars attached to those at different levels. And so. And so what's happening is just that, that five percent is an average across those different meal plans in terms of the incremental cost to the student. What do they get for that? It's really to reflect, it's really to cover what we expect to be just the added inflation on the food purchase that, that's actually part, part of our, that, that really is, is part of the, what Aramark is experiencing as our vendor. So, so it's really just to be able to support the operation and the, and the food costs in the program.
And you had mentioned that you, you've already explored the meal swipe and are looking at the potential for that meal swipe donation, potential for that for next fall.
Correct. We, and I appreciate the suggestion and trustee Taylor. I appreciate you, you raising that before. It is something we've, we've been looking, looking into and we believe we have a, we've found a solution and we'll be able to implement that next, next fall.
Yeah, I am so excited for that program to hopefully come to fruition. But right now I've, I've just met with the dean of students and we're trying to figure out the parameters for that projects. How many meal swipes would a student actually be able to donate? And then how many would we be able to offer up to students? So still trying to finalize some things, but definitely super excited about that. Oh, and then one more thing I wanted to mention is that I did want to come and speak to the board in January, kind of just more in depth around food insecurity on campus and then again about the program. So be happy to share that.
Any additional questions or comments?
I'm just glad that we got aggressive on the non-resident tuition. And now, I mean, even with those increases, you know, up the top five are going to keep going. So we'll take a look at, after the, the projection twenty-nine, see where we are. It might be something that we just keep track of on, on a yearly basis. And, you know, maybe it'll be time to be a little more aggressive if, if we see those folks doing it.
Yeah. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Um, Nate, just out of curiosity, if you go to page eight, the mandatory fee, just how, if, if UNC were to go to the level of NC State in terms of our fees, how much would that be? Or if we went to the system average, what, what would the, how much would that be?
Yeah, so we're, we're under eighteen hundred dollars and, you know, the system average is closer to twenty-eight hundred. So you're talking about, you're really a thousand dollars a student times our entire student body. So, um, you know, thirty thousand students, it's a, it's a sizable number. Of course, you have, I think the issue is, you know, we, we, there is a three percent statutory cap on how much we can increase our fees, our mandatory fees in any given year. That happened in seventeen, sixteen, seventeen was the year into seventeen, eighteen. And so you can see from that point in time, if you look at that line chart, you'll see we've been, actually even since that fee or that cap went in place, we've been more moderate in terms of how we approach that with a, with a stronger commitment to affordability there than most of the system. If we were closer to NC State, you'd still be above north of twenty-two hundred or more than four hundred dollars above where we're at currently.
Are the, and you may or may not know this, is, or the, the system average being higher, is that because some schools have smaller student bodies and they're basically trying to pay for the same types of service, but with a smaller group of people paying for it, is that, is that the basis for that?
A couple of things drive that. One, one big one is just athletics fee. So the athletics fees at some of our sister institutions are much, much higher than where UNC Chapel Hill and NC State are. Just because we have a, a larger number of revenue sources in athletics that can support that program. Many of those schools do not and theirs are upwards of eight to nine hundred dollars and ours is more in the hundred or fifty-dollar range. So again, again, a big, a big gap there. That's part of it. Part of it is, I think you're, you're, you're right, the economy's a scale and just you have a smaller group you're applying the fees to. And so, and then part of this is just, you know, the, the, the difficulty with that cap is it kind of went in place at a point in time. And not everybody started at the same place and it, and it really was irrespective of need on individual campuses. And so if you're a campus that has a big need that only can be met through, through a fee, it's a real challenge. Like, like what we're experiencing right now in terms of the campus rec and wellness, which is why we're kind of, really the recommendation in front of you is to, to do that over four years and try to, try to really have that additive increase over those years to try to be able to meet that fund service.
Trustee Broner.
Uh, so two quick comments. First, on our peers. So I have daughters who are applying to schools and I look at these peers and I can't quite make sense of them. Some of them are obvious, some of them a lot less obvious. It strikes me that Georgia should be on here, uh, which is obviously a very low comp for non-residents. So I think we just need to be much more careful about who we're considering as the non-resident peers to get to an average because, you know, it's, it looks like Michigan and Virginia are really skewing the average and everyone else is down where we are already. So I think we need to be careful about that. And then two, have we ever had campus-based tuition in any school go up thirty percent in a year?
Campus-based tuition on the graduate or undergrad, undergraduate side?
I'm just looking at the dental school increases.
Oh, they did, on the graduate side.
You know, it's, it's kind of eye-opening. I, I respect and defer to them, but I'm imagining being a parent.
We have had sizable percentage increases in the past. I think, you know, part of what's happening at the School of Dentistry, two things. One, there's some, some fiscal pressure there. And then two, they haven't touched their rates since nineteen twenty. So it's been several years and I think there's a little bit of catch-up involved.
Twenty twenty?
Nineteen, sorry, nineteen twenty. Fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen twenty. That just a, you know, just a hundred years or something.
Price back then.
Um. Yeah. Yeah, so there have been, I guess, what, four or five years of where they hadn't been able to increase rates.
Thank you.
So Vice Chancellor Knufman, you and I had discussions on the, on the student rec fees. Just to clarify, the, the committee got input from students with respect to that because, you know, in essence, you've got current students that are going to be funding what will be a benefit for future students really. And I also would like to ask about accommodations and maybe some upgrades to, to current facilities to assist our current student body on their paying it forward effort for future students.
Yeah, you, no, it's a, it's a great comment and it's one of the big challenges with anytime you're trying to fund something over, over a number of years and asking a current group of students to truly shoulder some of that without seeing the direct benefit. And we had that conversation some and it with, during our, our process, we, we are looking at ways to try to provide some help, some benefit during that time for students. I don't know what shape it will take yet, but we, we were talking through that. We're actively trying, going to prioritize that as part of the project moving forward. Whether that's, you know, a, a, a membership at gyms, other gyms, if there's something we can do on a temporary basis to enhance other facilities, just other things we're looking at. I will say this, the, the student leaders were very engaged on this, have been, been great partners, thinking through it and also authored a, a, a letter of support for this proposal.
And then another question, sort of talking about tuition increases at the graduate level particularly. You know, I had a recent experience with my son in New York City. He had been accepted to a fairly prominent graduate program and, and then right before he was gonna accept, you know, and decide to go to school, he got a, an additional job offer, right? And, and that school, I thought, did a fantastic job of walking him through the, his new job opportunity as opposed to the cost of the graduate program and the potential ROI and the opportunity cost lost by going to graduate school. And he ended up ultimately deciding not to go to graduate school because the ROI was better to take the, the promotion because it, you know, the ultimate, the ultimate sort of punchline was, you know, you, you can go to graduate school here and it will qualify you to get the job that you just got offered, right? And so he made the decision to continue in, in his profession there. And so I'm wondering about, you know, and maybe this is not a question for you. It's probably more of a question for maybe the deans or whatever. The, I know the system office is engaged in this ROI for degree programs. And I think it'd be really important, particularly as we start getting into these, into the arena of, of, of the amount of money that is costing our students to get these graduate degrees that they, that, that we are particularly instructive to them and that they come into these programs eyes wide open as to exactly what they're paying. And, and if they're borrowing money, what that payment looks like every month. And, and, and really answering the question, are we giving a, a, a real solid value to our graduates? You know, in terms of their earning potential following graduate school.
It's an important comment. I think, I mean, I think that was the thrust of that ROI study at the system level was, was trying to elevate what that looks like in terms of return for students. I think just with respect to these graduate program increases, even part of this process, you, what you see is a schedule of just rate increases in front of you. There's a larger justification from each of those schools that submits a, a proposal for a consideration. And part of that gets into the return. It gets into student indebtedness. It gets into what they're likely to earn. So there is, there is that piece being captured as part of this process. There's also a requirement that the schools engage students on that, even before those increases go. So just as part of this process, there is some, some consideration of the points you're raising.
Right, and Chair Pryor wanted to add something.
Just in response to your comment about whether or not there was active student participation, I'll just say that, as Vice Chancellor Knufman referenced, I attended this most recent meeting of the Tuition Task Force. I think I have participated in every year that I've been on the board. I drew the short straw years ago and I've continued to do it. And I'll just say, the student participation impressed me this year unlike any other because I'd say four or five years ago, there was, there was sort of like a lack of understanding about how we had to be at least closer to market, if not at market. And that was a little bit of a hurdle four plus years ago. Not a hurdle at all. And I couldn't have been more impressed with the participants in the task force and the recognition that, that we have to remedy what has been a lagging level. So anyway, kudos to you, Vice Chancellor Knufman.
Yep, President Taylor.
Thank you. I think this is more a question for trustee Codis, but did you, do you know if Congresswoman Virginia Fox's College Reduction Act includes graduate students?
I know it does because it, in one of the charts that came out, it showed graduate students in there as well. And that was actually one of, that was one of the points I was going to raise is it would be nice when we have these increases if we're, one, protecting the students that are already in the program so they're not getting a bump.
Yeah.
And then two, when we're looking at these increases in the tuition, are we evaluating them based on outcomes as well? So if we had both of those pieces of info, or one policy and another piece of information, I think that would be helpful. What's our policy right now? I know we have the four-year undergrad protection, which says if you start, you're protected on tuition increases. The graduate school tuition, I don't think is protected by that.
Correct, that's just for undergraduate residents.
Yeah, right.
That, that policy about the tuition guarantee.
And it doesn't apply to fees.
Correct.
But I do think the concept of a guarantee when you're coming in, that you know what you're signing up for so that you don't have, in the case of the dentistry students, you know, another ten or twenty grand worth of debt, or I guess five or 10 grand worth of debt, because even if they were in the program, that would just be bumping up for them.
And there's additional complexity on the graduate side because a lot move from non-resident, especially when they're residents, non-resident I think convert to resident after a year too. So that's that complexity too.
Trustee Patel.
And did I hear you correctly? You said that the, the four-year guarantee is not applicable for non-residents?
Correct.
Undergrad?
Correct. So that increase that we're talking about, that, that would, would, could apply and would apply to all non-residents.
So is there any concern of a, of a sticker shock at that point in time?
I mean, I think, you know, when we look at our demand and the number of applications in the data comparatively on our peers, we feel pretty secure in that price point.
Yeah, I, my, my sense is from talking to Chair Pryor and Vice Chancellor Knufman, that the work that went in on the front end for this was pretty detailed with, particularly with respect to input from students, faculty, staff. I thought that, I thought your work is fantastic and really detailed. I mean, there were times in the history of this university that if you, if you asked for a one percent increase, you'd have, you know, three hundred students out here with signs complaining about increasing tuition. But I think that there is, you know, the, the, again, it's the communication and it's the understanding of the value that University of North Carolina Chapel Hill brings to students here at the university and what you get for that, I think, has made this. And, and I think a general understanding of inflationary pressures across the nation coming out of COVID and coming out of, um, uh, you know, economic policy decisions. And, and those, those inflationary pressures and supply chain issues, right? Caused a lot of that. And I think trustee Patel talked about that in the food service industry last year, right? It was last year you really, and year before about the, in the COVID, all that, you gave, gave a great discussion on that. So really appreciate the communication from your department and the committee. I think that's gone a long way. And trustee Brown, Tom.
I think, yeah, I just want to be clear. When will students be able to walk through and utilize the new rec center?
Great question. You know, likely it would be, uh, we would, likely we'd be two to three years from, from this point, um, out from having the new rec and wellness center.
Two to three years, not from, not from putting a shovel underground, but from walking through the doors and utilizing it.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of, you know, kind of putting a rock in a hard place, but I think it's really a credit to the student leadership and the discussions across campus about wanting to pay it forward to future students. And, and I talked to Vice Chancellor Knufman and he assured me that there's going to be a lot of efforts to help accommodate current students to try to give them some value. And I'm sure President Taylor will help with that. And we, we all are really thank former student buddy, President Chris Everett for his work on this. I mean, he would really shown up on it and, I mean, got, got, got this done, really. I mean, really pressed it to the forefront. So, okay, so, um, can we take all this as a package, Mr. McClure? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, uh, the, the fee structure that Vice Chancellor Knufman has illustrated to the board? I have a motion from trustee Meekins and I have a second from trustee Patel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, that passes. And then I would, uh, inform the board that all of these items will be put on the consent agenda for the full board meeting set tomorrow morning. If any board member decides that they would like, uh, any item taken off of the consent agenda, you can make that motion at the full board meeting. Okay, with no further business, I'll, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from trustee Patel and a second from trustee White. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favors, please say aye. Aye, uh, this committee stands adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.